Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:03. Let's see, and it's just a public hearing, so do we just make a motion to go into public hearing?
Generally, that's after the presentation is done. So we do the public hearing after the presentation.
All right, so you've got a, whatchamacallit, you've got a presentation for us.
Yep. Hi, everybody. So Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Welcome back to budget season. It's been a few months, a little bit less time than we normally have due to the extended budget season last year, but capital budget public hearing is generally the first step in the direction of the new budget season. I'm going to be doing the bulk of the speaking at first and also sharing of my screen. So let me get, let me, actually, first thing I'll do is pull up the agenda here, just so you all can see it. So tonight, we have the public hearing item, which is going to be after my presentation, where councilors and then the public will be able to ask questions. And if you want to follow along from home, although I'll be sharing my screen, but for whatever reason, if you can't see my screen very well, if you go to the town's website under the Finance Department page, you have 2122 budget information. And tonight, we're going to be reading from the public hearing presentation right here, as well as all, as we go forward with all budget items, they will be archived on this page. And I just want to also call attention before we actually jump into the presentation. If you go to the town's website, on the homepage, on the left-hand toolbar, we have created a section about the Firehouse project specifically. So at your leisure time out there, if you all want to click on that and kind of click through the materials, we're building this page out to be part of the public information effort regarding this specific project, because this is going to require a standalone referendum. So with that being said, let me switch back over to my actual presentation for tonight. Let me make it full screen here. And great, well, let's get started. So hi, everybody. Again, if you just joined, Mike Rosen, Talon Town Manager. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the five-year capital plan and end with the public hearing on any of the, if there's any questions on any of the projects in the five-year plan. Usually, we get started by talking about what is the capital budget and what constitutes a capital asset in town. So I'm just going to kind of read a little bit from the slide, but again, the materials are out there for you to digest at your leisure time. So everything the town does from providing services to residents and citizens, to equipping all of our employees, both on the town and the school side, effectively to perform their jobs, requires the existence of physical assets. So think the big-ticket things like streets, parks, buildings, school facilities, schools in general, large equipment and technology. So assets must be purchased, maintained and replaced on a timely basis, or their usefulness in providing public services will diminish. One of the things that the rating agencies look at is how bolstered your infrastructure is to make sure you're in a good position and that you can weather the storm with your infrastructure. So having a strong infrastructure and up-to-date buildings and equipment is a good thing financially and just good management practice. It's a prudent thing to do. The town's five-year capital improvement program is developed. It's in the town's charter. It's to ensure adequate capital investment in the town's assets and to provide an orderly method for funding these assets. So what is a capital item? Again, it's sort of the big-ticket items you can think of. So any new or expanded physical facility, including if part of that would be design and professional services related to perhaps architecting a new school or a new building or a new fire station, for example. Number two is land or property acquisition. That doesn't happen so frequently for us. We mostly do one and three. Three is items of a nonrecurring nature where the benefits are realized over a long period of time. And the two things to highlight for that item, or really all of these, is what constitutes a capital asset is its life expectancy. It has to have at least a useful life of eight years, and its cost has to be at least $10,000. Otherwise, generally, departments might be able to absorb that cost, especially if it's a one-time cost out of their operating budgets or contingency. So
Yeah. Your screen is only showing the website still. It's not showing the
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why that's going on. Okay, I apologize, everybody. Give me one more second. I was going through my slideshow and I'm glad you told me. Okay.
I'm going through on the side of mine, so like
Can you see it now?
Yeah, it's working.
Okay, sorry. Well, I'm glad I told you all to follow along from home. So what you missed quickly was just, I talked about streets, parks, buildings, blah, blah, blah. What makes a capital asset? And now we're up to the planning process. So where we are up to tonight, so back all the way, it feels like a lifetime ago, October of 2020, capital budget requests were submitted to the town manager. That came from the various departments, as well as the school district. Preliminary capital budget review and department head meetings, we met, Lisa, Mike Wilkinson and I met with each of the department heads, and we also did a meeting over at the Board of Ed building with Walt and Pizza Tabba. And then I submitted to the council, on December 7th, or the week of December 7th, the memo, which was in the packet, and I re-forwarded it, that kind of outlined what the capital assets were going to be for the five-year plan. There was one change since the memo was released in December, which I'll touch on in a little bit, so I'll get to that. So tonight, we're having the capital budget public hearing. And then going forward from this point, we'll be, I'll be submitting this capital budget to council as part of the overall recommended budget in March. And then council will have the opportunity to approve the program as part of their overall budget. And then eventually, we'll be going to referendum. We're still holding out hope that we will have a referendum this year. I haven't heard otherwise, although as the town manager, I have reached out to the governor's office to see if there's any pending executive orders that may not allow us to have a referendum. At this point, they have not weighed in on that yet, so I don't know, but we're hoping, we're planning as if we're going to have a referendum. We, in order to fund capital assets, which again are our big-ticket items, we rely on several funding sources. So general fund contribution, which we're, that's, that's one of the major ones we use, such as cash, cash to pay for projects. There's also the Capital Nonrecurring Fund, which is a standalone fund that is not regularly replenished. It only gets replenished when there's specific things that go into the CNRE. You'll hear me talk about CNRE. And we do have some money in there, and we do have some money programmed in the five-year plan to use CNRE money to pay, or at least help smooth out the impact to the general fund. The non-referendum notes is when you borrow, but you don't have to go to referendum to issue debt. It stays under the capacity limit to borrow. LoSiP or Local Capital Improvement Plan is a state aid, as well as town aid road grant, which is also known as TAR. We have, you'll see in the five-year plan, we have several projects that are programmed to both of those, hoping and expecting that state aid will be available for those categories. State school construction grants, I don't think we have anything currently in our five-year plan that's programmed to that, but I may be wrong about that. But, you know, obviously, the example that comes to mind recently is when we just had Birch Grove was heavily funded by construction grants from the state. Ambulance fees, generally, they're generated when the ambulance goes to, on medical calls. And as such, some public safety assets, and specifically those, well, mostly public safety, and some, you know, obviously ambulance-related ones are charged to that. Cemetery funds, I don't believe we have anything, but I could just double-check on that. Referendum borrowing, so that's, that's for big projects. Like, for example, as we're going to be recommending the Firehouse Improvement Program, that would be referendum borrowing. So that would mean that there's a standalone question on the referendum pertaining to that project. And for us, we're talking about doing that in May for the Firehouse Improvement Project for $5 million. The other three, so Recreation Special Revenue Fund, there's, that's, that's when you, there's program fees that are generated for participating in recreation programs. And then USIP is the Utility Service Reserve Fund. There was a lot of talk of that recently at council about Honeywell and all that, and how we might put money, or we, now I'm authorized to make the negotiate and make the deal with Honeywell, and that money would be parked in the utility reserve fund. So generally, again, projects that are paid for out of that have to do with energy savings and things like that. So now that we've got all that out of the way, here's an eye chart for you all to read that eye chart. Just kidding, you can see this in, you know, your books, but all this is, is a snapshot of the various department requests for year one, broken down by the funding source. So those are on the, across the horizontal access, on access on top, you'll see all the funding sources we just went over. On the vertical access, excuse me, access, you'll see all the departments listed out, including the Board of Education. So this is, again, just year one. And the overall impact to the general fund for year one, we're looking at 211,213. That's, that's the number we're moving forward with at this point. So a good chunk of that comes from the first project that we're going to touch on, which I think we've all seen this before, but in case anybody hasn't, Talon is part of the Vernon Water Pollution Control Plant Upgrade. It's, it's a, it's a project that is got a 20-year useful life or 20-year life. Overall, $3.298 million, but we, we only pay 5.63% of the project cost and loan interest after grant proceeds. So basically, what we're going to be seeing in our general fund impact every single year is 164,906, unless the debt payment requires change. So that's going forward for the next 17 years. But to date, the first three years of this, we've been able to pad some of the impact to the general fund using the CNRE money we talked about earlier, which is the nonrecurring, capital nonrecurring money that, that council authorized us the ability by resolution to deposit some state revenue into the CNRE to be used over the three-year period to alleviate the cost of the debt. We also have been fortunate that, and this is the final year of this, but we do have some available account balance, $33,540, that we're using. So that way, we're only paying 134,906, I believe. Let me, I can just go back for a second here.
Mike, hang on. If you could hang on for a second, there's some people that are texting me. They're having issues with it being, with the screen. I don't know, that you've been moving along, and I just want to check see if there's anybody, they're raising, if they can raise their hand if they're having issues seeing it, because they're still stuck on page number one.
Uh, is that true for others?
I'm not, but
I mean, I'm seeing it. I have no issue, but I just want to
Okay, well, I, again, they can, I'm sorry to say that I'm trying to get through, but if they want to, they can, they can follow along from the website, too.
Okay, I just want to check and just get
Okay. Thank you. No, thank you for letting me know. I, sorry, I'm just, I'm in my mode here, so.
I'm in my mode. Mic's on our roll.
So let's talk about other things besides WPCA. Well, I mentioned, so 85,000 is being charged to the general fund this year to WPCA, which is the pollution project for the sewer. Other two projects that are being charged to town administration, from town administration, are, there's a cargo van, number 75, that's $43,267. And then also, the Board of Education has worked with us, and this is one of the things Walt, Pete and I talked about when we met, was that the high school special education area needs to be renovated, and that's slated to cost $15,000, which we're programming to the general fund. We also, as part of what we do, it's good management practice to program depreciation into your, into your, you know, model for replacing vehicles. And on the town side, 39,854 for town vehicles, 14,862 for Public Works vehicles, and Board of Ed, 12,786. And here's where the change takes place from what the memo we had submitted back in December. So I have some notes here, but that, this number was originally $14,000 lower. It was 25,854. And the difference there, the $14,000, was an adjustment that we had to add in the depreciation of the Fire Marshal's vehicle, which we funded last year. And we found out, talking with the Public Safety Department, that the useful life of that vehicle is actually not, we usually do a 10-year useful life. We've learned that it's actually a five-year useful life, which expedites the depreciation. Now, the good thing is, is that the way we do this is, even though it's a five-year useful life, that doesn't mean that that car is retired after five years. Instead, it actually gets passed down the line after the Fire Marshal uses it for five years and needs to go out and get a new car. Because as you can imagine, when cars are used in the method that they are for the fire or public safety departments, it's fast acceleration, hard braking, lights and sirens going on the highway. So, you know, they have a five-year true useful life. But then, after the Fire Marshal gets done beating it up for five years, it gets pushed down to another person who may use it in a little bit of a lighter manner, now that it's kind of a couple of years old, six-plus years old. And meanwhile, they go out and get another car. So that's why this number went from 25,854 to 39, because the cost of the depreciation was expedited from 10 years to five years by $14,000. Other projects being funded in this first year, Crandall Park is programmed to have a new playground. And we actually, I have some notes in my paperwork here, but originally, this was going to be a lot higher of a cost of about $112,000, but we were able to get it down to $40,000, because we were able to reuse some of the components of the old Birch Grove School Playground. So the 40,000 that's left over here being charged to the CNRE is just for other stuff. And, and it's, it's, the playground is used by kids ages five to 12 years old. Public facilities, the Jail Museum is ready to have their roof replaced, and that's going to be funded by the LoSiP grant, the local capital improvement grant that's provided by the state of Connecticut. I'm going to skip the next one for a second, because we're, I'll just go to Board of Ed paving and sidewalk project. That's, that's two, two separate projects, one at TMS, one at TIS. They're being bundled together to be able to qualify for non-referendum debt. And again, I know Dr. Will, it's in the audience when we get to the Q and A, but, you know, specifically, that's a program that is, is ready to go. And then I'll just go back to the Firehouse Project. So here's the big one, $5 million to be done by referendum debt. And we've talked about this at council before. We've talked about how the number was programmed into the capital plan previously. At 3 million, that's before we kind of knew the true scope of the project. And the, again, the project here is to do renovations and additions at Station 140, and also demolish and completely rebuild from scratch Stations 340 and 440. For those, we're talking about doing prefabricated Morton-style buildings. So I actually was able, thanks, thanks to our town engineer and to the Morton firm, we were able to actually pull up some renderings of what that will look like. So I'm going to share some nice pictures here. This is what Station 140, that's the, up at Crystal, would look like after the addition is done. So as you'll, you see the addition here, one thing the vendor told us is that likely they wouldn't actually have glass doors, but we wanted you to be able to see what the depth of this would look like here. So, you know, nice, clean-looking station. We have a couple other angles as well to kind of show what it's going to look like. You see the gazebo out there, and here's another shot from another angle. And then from the back, as you can see, the bays are there on the right-hand side. So I think this is just one more shot. So we're excited about that, that that's for Station 140. And now 340 and 440, those are those prefabricated buildings. So there, what we have talked to the vendor about, and we would have to go out to bid for this, but we've been talking with a likely bidder on this about how this could look. And the 340 and 440 will probably be cookie cutters of each other. They'll be the same exact design, much like 340 and 440 existing are at the moment. So this is a rendering. We, we made this rendering based on the specifics that the Fire Department and Police Department, Public Safety Department spoke with the vendor about, about specific things they're looking for in terms of the space needs and the depth and the dimensions of the bays, as well as everything else, the roofs, the living quarters, the bathrooms, the dining kitchen area. So this, this bakes in all of that advice and guidance. So that's, that's a front view of what it would look like with the three bays there. I particularly like this with the windows. It looks nice. It's open. That's the back view there. And there's the side view. Oh, I'm bouncing some more numbers here. So that's, that's basically, that's, that's the fire station project. And again, you can follow that information on the Firehouse Project. I mean, I know we're getting closer and closer now. I expect within the coming weeks, we're also going to have a video tour that John Littell is working with, I believe a student, to put together a video tour of what the existing conditions of the three buildings are, so that the public can see why they need to be renovated and why, you know, space needs are so important. So now, we're, we're still in year one, fiscal year 2122, and there's some capital equipment here. There's a front-end loader that, this is Public Works. Front-end loader needs to be replaced. Snow removal truck needs to be replaced. A mechanic truck is, needs to be replaced. These are all from debt, but not, not referendum debt. And then also, four X marks mowers. So that's, that's those projects. We've also been alerted that ambulance 640 needs to be replaced. And we, every year, you're going to see this on the capital plan every single year. Tree trimming, $70,000 out of the Town Aid Road Grant. I think council will remember when we had EverSource come to one of our previous meetings and talked about tree trimming and things. This is what the town can do for tree trimming, for dead trees or dying trees, or those that are vulnerable to those diseases, and Emerald Ashbourne and all that stuff that Scott tells me about all the time. So, and then just on to streets and roads here, these are pretty standard. You're going to see over and over again as well. Drainage, construction and design, we pay out of Town Aid Road for that. Pavement management, 236,500 out of more state grants. And every year, we, we put, we try to put a full million dollars towards road improvements in town. We use that, that mapping system that shows the deterioration and degrading of roads over time. And we, we do a million dollars a year. There was a $5 million referendum borrowing from November of 18. We were able to squeeze six years out of what was going to be a five-year bond, because we're supplementing some of the money from the grants. So in this case, some of that TAR or LoSiP grant is going to make up the difference between the 800,000 you see, and then, you know, the 200, the extra 200,000 or so is going to be paid for by a grant. So we strive for a million total dollars a year, but the funding sources, we vary depending on what the availability of the bond is and, and grants. And then just lastly, Cross Farms Rear Parking Lot is also, we talked about this last year, and that's scheduled to be replaced under non-referendum debt. So now we're in some of the out years here, years two, three, four and five. I mean, obviously, the further out you get, the less clear the picture is and the less stable in terms of, things can move around in the out years. There can be things that get expedited due to problems or things arising that weren't anticipated. But we, in order to have a solid five-year plan, we try to give you everything that we think's going to happen when we think it's going to happen. So in year two, so now you've got the full WPCA. Oh, actually, there is $30,000. At least, I, I'm not sure if that, is that slightly accurate? The 30,000 dollars is coming out of account balance? Okay, so year two, we do have one more padding. I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. 134,906 from general fund and $30,000 from account balance. I believe this is the final year that we have any padding. After this year, there's no more padding. So 164,906 is the number going forward after year two. The other change to year two that we didn't have in the, the draft memo that we sent out in December, was that the Fire Chief's car, the Chevy Tahoe, which we anticipate is going to be $70,000, which was the same price as the Fire Marshal's car that got paid for out of this year's budget. That had in the past been funded by the Fire Corporation, but they've alerted us that, that cannot continue to happen going forward, and that the town has to step up and be able to provide the chief his car. So we, as we told them, we can't do it in year one, but that we would put it in year two, just, you know, so that council is aware that this change is happening, and that the town is going to be taking the mantle now of the chief's vehicle. Also, this year, there's a Board of Ed project on wireless access point upgrades. There's a dishwasher and sink system replacement. There's the artillery lifts, which is sort of, I'm probably not the best person to speak to this, but sort of like a, a way for, for public, Board of Ed facilities projects to happen at a higher altitude. They're able to raise them up to, you know, do lights or nets or baskets and things like that, that are at a higher altitude. High school oven steamer is also due to re-replace this year. And then the, the track at the middle school is programmed to be resurfaced, and that's all out of non-referendum debt. Capital equipment, there's another Parks Truck, another mower. There's a replacement of a second Parks Truck and Highway Truck, and then another remote-controlled mower. And, you know, again, I know the department heads are in the audience. If there's questions, we can answer them, you know, after this. I'm sure there's questions about different trucks. And then fire and ambulance, this year, there's a couple of things going on out of the Fire or Public Safety Department. Ambulance 540 is looking to be replaced by the ambulance fund, as well as ET 240. And that's due to be refurbished, as well as ET 540 is due to be replaced. So there's a bunch of things happening at the same time that year. The one to highlight, though, is that ET 540 is being funded by non-referendum debt and not the ambulance fund that year. So keep that in mind. That's going to be a borrow project. Parks and Rec, we have out of, out of the Recreation Fund. They're looking to do some repairs to tennis courts that have been cracked and they need to be resurfaced on Old Cat Hole Road. We have tree trimming again, which we talked about, insect infestation. Highway garage needs a new shingled roof, and also pole sheds. And then we're paying for the shed, pole sheds out of the LoSiP grant. The roof is out of general fund. And drainage construction is, again, a TAR grant thing, $91,000. Year three, so now, again, you have the full 164,906 out of the general fund. No more padding for the Vernon Sewer for the next 15 or so years. That's the number you're going to see, give or take. And then Board of Ed, TIS has a roof that needs to be replaced. Pickup truck, truck number 27 as well, and then a sweeper that is looking to be funded out of non-referendum debt. And then on public safety side, we've got a tanker that needs to be refurbished, and an engine tank 340 that needs to be replaced. Some more grant-related projects, we've got the generator for the highway garage, and retrofitting the generator for Parks and Facilities Garage. Those are both being programmed to the LoSiP grant. The turf replacement at Talon High School, that's, that's right now programmed in for $825,000 out of non-referendum debt. It's obviously a large dollar amount project. That's been looked into a lot this year. I remember over the summer, taking a walk over at the, the high school and looking at the condition of the turf replaced, that the existing turf. And we do, we have spoken with AstroTurf, the vendor that provides this kind of turf, and they talk about how the, we're, by this point in year three, will be past the useful life of the existing turf. Tree trimming, 70,000. Road improvements, 820, that's 820 out of the bond, and then the other 180 would be out of a grant, one of the grants, out of the LoSiP and TAR grants. And then more drainage construction, again, from TAR. Year four, WPCA, capital equipment. So we've got a VAC Con for the Highway Department. That's, that's to comply with the catch basin cleaning and MS4 program. MS4 program is a biggie for, for the towns. Replacement of Highway Truck number 64. And then Public Safety has requested another refurbishment for a tanker 440, as well as replacing engine tank 440. So that's a full replacement out of non-referendum debt. Pickleball courts at Heron Cove, and Parks and Facilities Garage upgrade, tree trimming, pavement management, road improvements. Again, this is sort of standard. And lastly, year five, we, WPCA, Board of Ed renovations. Walt did say, when we spoke, that in that year five, we would be looking at doing some various renovations in the nurses area at TIS, the cafe tables at TMS, and the THS track. And then capital equipment, we have, we want to buy a used road grader at that point, and then also replace a truck and replace a roadside mower. And then Public Safety wants to replace Truck 240, as well as, they're going to need some new PPE at that point. You know, it'll already be about seven or eight years old, so they're going to need to replenish that out of the ambulance reserve. The Arts Center Building, their roof is also, needs to be replaced by that point, as we're predicting where we are. $65,000. That could change, obviously, over time as costs escalate. And pavement management, we also, that's the year where we're going to need to consider doing another bond referendum, because we'll have exhausted our six years on the existing bond referendum for $5 million. That was programmed in 2018. So, you know, obviously, it's a few years away at this point, but wanted to put it on people's radars that we will probably need to do another bond. You know, roads need to be paved, and we have to pay for that somehow. So I'm not going to expect you to try to read this. If you have a chance to get your magnifying glass, this is the equipment age schedule for the Highway Division. So Public Works provides this to kind of show useful lives and how long trucks stay in rotation. You know, I know we just kind of went through and talked all about all these replacements and everything, but these are all the trucks we have in our, in our squad, in our fleet. And they need to be replaced over time. Cap, you know, like I said, assets and trucks are important to keep in, in good shape. So a lot of times, they, they go past their useful lives many, many years. We're kind of at the point now where we're lucky that we don't have a lot of town buildings that are on the We're kind of at the point now where we're lucky that we don't have a lot of town buildings that are on the schedule. So instead, we look to equipment to improve, so that's good. And then just the same thing for the Parks and Facilities Division, their fleet. And then this just shows a little bit of a snapshot in time of general fund contributions to the overall, as, as a function of overall operating budget. So, you know, in, in general, I know those numbers obviously appear to be escalating. A lot of that, especially coming year, year twenty to twenty-one, that big jump there. A lot of that has to do with the WPCA, water sewer, you know, we, coming online, this was the year it came online, we're in year two now. And the jump from one ninety-two to two eleven. Much, if not all of that, is the depreciation cost of that ten-year going down to five years on the, on the fire marshal's vehicle. I think other than that, the memo I had submitted to you back in December only had a four thousand dollar increase year over year. The other fourteen thousand dollars was due to that, but overall, percentage-wise of operating budget, just on the tax levy. We're talking less than a percent, we're talking a third of a percent, right? Point three four, this year, this year is probably about the same, maybe a little bit more, obviously. But that's just on the tax levy projects, obviously, there's debt and all that other things we talked about. So to that, to that end, here's a pie chart that shows a percentage of all the departments and, and the schools. As a percentage of the capital plan by program area. And this pie chart looks very different than it did last year. Because the big, big one here, public facilities, well, five million dollars of that is the fire in-house improvements. Otherwise, it's only forty-four thousand dollars, but five million dollars obviously eats up the entire pie here. Other than that, I mean, all the other things we talked about, you know, roads is a, roads is a big one too. Board of Ed is relatively, you know, one fifty-five is not too bad, and capital equipment. So again, this, this pie chart looked very different last year, you know, we didn't have that big five million in here last year. And Lisa likes this slide, and this is our debt management plan schedule in the sense that we, we want to show you what debt looks like going forward in the future. And, you know, we do want to show that the numbers do fall over time, you know, an amount to be paid from debt service fund. It goes down, takes a while as things kind of come off the books, but that's how we try to do a, 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 a good, solid debt plan. Is so that there aren't peaks and valleys necessarily, but that it's smoothed over time. So this year, the increase is fifty thousand dollars, there's a couple of things that go into that fifty thousand dollars. But, you know, Birch Grove School and is coming back online next year, and then also the firehouses. We are still hoping that by the year twenty-five, twenty-six, that we will get back down to four point five five million, which is the number that we are looking to stay at level for the future. But that way, we can begin to build capital reserves in that CNRE fund to do a pay-as-you-go basis in the future. But right now, you know, obviously, Birch Grove debt is coming on as well as the firehouses. And here's just the remaining schedule, we talked about tonight, the capital budget hearing we're going to have tonight, the Board of Education, I received their proposed budget this afternoon. We're going to have a joint meeting between the council and the Board of Ed in a couple of days, in the twenty-second, to talk about. Non-education related projects that, that the council and the Board of Ed may want to discuss that are part of the project. As well as, so then I'll submit my budget to you, the town council. We'll have a public hearing, we're going to do some of these department nights where we've done that in the past, where we've had departments come in and talk about their budgets. We'll have the overall public hearing, and then council will finalize the budget. We'll have the annual budget presentation meeting, and hopefully the referendum, May fourth. So that's the remaining calendar on the, the budget cycle. I did add two more slides here, you've, you've seen these before when we did the, the firehouse slides. This is just, it's a parallel tract to the budget calendar, this is specific to the firehouse project. So how do we get from February eleventh to May fourth to the referendum? Well, I need to recommend to the council that we do this project, March ninth. Council would, you know, appropriate and authorize to do a public hearing. We would have the public hearing March seventeenth, or, sorry, March twenty-third, we would notice the public hearing seventeenth, we'd have the public hearing March twenty-third. And it would go to P and Z for their review. Referendum vote. Yeah, that's, sorry, nothing really exciting here, I'm just kind of reading along, but yeah, it's just, this is out there if you want to see it. But this is a parallel timeline to the, to the overall budget calendar. So that's, that's all I have for my presentation. I guess at this point, certainly would want to open it up to counselors to ask any questions they may have of me or of the department heads who are here. It's why, this is my first chance to actually look around the room, so thank, thank you all, department heads and Dr. Willitt, thank you all for being here tonight to help. Me present this budget and, and also defend the budget. So if you have any specific questions, counselors, please let me know and we can farm it out to the, to the department heads. And then after council asks their questions, we would open the public hearing, and then the public is welcome to ask their questions. And again, no vote is done tonight, we don't vote on the budget tonight, we're listening, we're taking notes. Any edits or any amendments would take place between now and when we submit the overall budget to you, March fourth. And I need a drink of water, so thank you very much.
Sorry, all right. So Mike, like zoomed through that, he zoom zoomed on the zoom. So does anybody have any questions they want to start with? Hello?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, that, this is going to be directed more towards Chief Laitel and the, and the fire department. That we've seen, you know, as far as the five million dollar bonding that we're looking at and the, the renovations and rebuilding of some of the buildings. Along the same lines of what we're doing with Birch Grove, although we don't have, we're not tapped into state funding for this one. My question is, well, first off, part to Mike as well, is there any possibility of, since some of these changes, some of these rebuilding. Is based upon crumbling foundation issues, is there any funding that may be available to offset some of the cost? Not that I need to know that right now, but that is something that I'd like to take a look at, to see if there is some of that out there. But for Chief Laitel, it's, you know, if we're going to rebuild these, these firehouses, are they going to be what you need? I mean, I, I know that we, we all, we all have a wish list, but it's something where I'd rather build it to the future once and have it work for a period of time. Even if, even if it means that we need to take a look at how things are being done, as opposed to building to. To a certain specification where in five years, ten years, it's going to be, you know, behind, it's going to be outdated. So, not that I want to spend extra money, but I, I'm looking for an opinion on this, because if we're going to spend the money, I want to spend it the right way. Thank you.
Mr. Louba, I think one thing I can mention is that, I know, excuse me, I know that. We're looking at potential state aid through the bonding bill to help offset, possibly, if it goes through legislation. To help us, you know, pay for that five million dollars. I don't know that we can necessarily go to our insurer or, you know, I, I think that's not potentially the right angle on this. But, but I do think that we're, we are reaching out regarding state aid for this, if possible. And we would, understanding our timeline between now and the referendum, working with our bond council. We would, we would create the language as part of the resolution that should we be able to receive outside money, whether it's from the state or other sources, grants, or whatever it might be. The debt would be reduced by that, so we wouldn't borrow what we don't need if we get it from another source. Similar to how the Birch Grove language was drafted. I hope I said that right, Lisa, but, you know, we, we would, we were going to be authorizing, asking the town through referendum to authorize us to borrow up to five million. But, but to be reduced by any amount we may receive by any other means.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
And on a side note on that, I have put in a piece of legislation asking to see if we can get bonding for the fire departments from the state of Connecticut. Don't know that it's going to go anywhere, but it is, it has been asked for.
Do you want me to speak to that, Mr. Rosen, or?
About getting what you need?
Is hypothetical questions as far as, is it what we need?
Well, why don't you, maybe we can tell them a little bit about how we came together and, you know, worked out how we need. I mean, maybe that would be good, just to mention our meetings with the town engineer and such.
Thank you.
So as you guys all know, you guys both, everybody should have the packets that the reviews have been done. That we've hired consultants over the last twenty years. So back in two thousand and six, we've been after this plan for the additions of the firehouses or fixtures of the firehouses. Probably why we're in the state of demolition that we are now. As far as answering a question, is it what we need or is it the adequate space? That'd be posing the same type of question to like, I see, and I'm not picking on him, but the superintendent's on tonight. That'd be posing the same type of question of, you know, do we have enough school space or rooms? It's all dependent, and as the town grows, and if our commercial space grows, well, then the call level and the volume level for the department is going to start expanding as it already has been. So we're at least touching and trying to fix a couple of stations that were built back in the seventies that were, you know, adequate back in the day. Do they meet the code or the enforcement of anything else today? No, they don't, you can see some of the pictures that are on the slides, and hopefully the videos that will come out will show that, you know, the guys are having a kitchen inside of an apparatus bay, eating their lunch or staying overnight. So as we go forth, code changes and other NFPA building codes change from year to year. I can't hypothetically answer where the department's going to be in the next four to five to six years. If you see that there's a crisis across the state of Connecticut, and they have a national study that's called the Fire Study Program of every community. The volunteership is down across the state of Connecticut. So as the call volume goes, will we start seeing a twenty-four, seven operation in this town? You're probably going to see it, it's been one of my goals over the last ten years to increase the hours of the career staff from six to six. Well, if that starts increasing, we start going to twenty-four hour, seven coverage, I need to provide the adequate coverage to staff, personnel overnight. And then obviously, you know, shifts and schedules will change. I don't have the adequate facilities to legally keep staff overnight. Because once you start calling the dayroom sleeping quarters, well, then you have to meet the code requirements. So hopefully, part of these plans will address some of the code requirements and some of the new standards that are out there today. But who would have thought that we would have had to buy two washing machines over the last couple of years, which came from donations and nothing out of town money? But my decon room at Station one forty became washers and dryers because of the new cancer legislation and the rules that are out there that, the cancer bills that are out there, we have to wash the gear. And with that being said, the, the two other outlined stations, or I should say three, don't even have the adequate bathrooms to allow the staff to decon themselves and properly shower. So are we moving forth in the right direction? We are, I mean, I think our target goal with the engineer and the town management is to go after our, our biggest asset, which is Station one forty, which is located on sixty-four Crystal Lake Road. But unfortunately, that's our newest station, and thankfully, you know, TMI and the state for putting a bill in that's on the bill that we're trying to get as much support as we can. Because that's a crumbling foundation, no, no difference in that, you know, what happened at Birch Grove. Hopefully, as we move forth, the other stations don't have that, but we're limited for space at the other two stations of how the stations were designed and laid out. But as far as expansion, at least it will provide some more storage or overnight stays. You can see what's happening with the natural disasters. And years ago, we, we used to try to populate the town into four quadrants of the town to put Public Works and fire staff. So we can get to different sides of the town because we're gridlocked when roads get closed. Years ago, we staffed the Public Works with the fire guys up at Station four on Plains Road. I don't have the adequate space to technically do that, or they're really not getting the rest of the sleep wires or anything else that's there. So, you know, the Morton buildings are the cheapest way, that's why we're trying to be conservative with the town, to go after those type of Morton steel type of buildings. Because I need the space, I need the room, will they be big enough? I'm hoping, but we're limited with space and we're trying to save on the money. The biggest money aspect is going to be Station one forty, but like I said, we've been going after this since two thousand and three, two thousand and six. So as the prices move forth, and we put this in a referendum and a budgeting as we move down the road, who knows what's going to happen to the prices and, and the economics? We might be able to fix Station one forty and do Garing Road and not have the adequate money to go back out to Station four and completely redo that station. Station four is the newest station that was built, and it's, it's sad to me, but the deterioration of the stations and the, everything else is getting worse as we move forth. So I'm hoping that, you know, your facilities that are storing two fire trucks that are almost two million dollars in one firehouse. Your, your capital assets of this community, you've got some large dollar values. And with that being said, will I have enough space as the, the community moves forth to, what happens with the. Planning and zoning and the zoning changes in a town, if we start seeing more commercial space and more different businesses, well, then I have to look at that. I mean, we just let, we just added our last guy in, over the last twelve years, so I'm, I'm at least covering somewhat ten to ten, or six AM to six PM. But that's only with seven guys, so as we move forth, will I have the proper adequate space? I'm hopeful, but I'm grateful to get anything I can to, you know, safeguard the community's assets, so if that answers your question.
Thank you. Kurt, you're next.
Thank you, first question's one for Scott. It has to do with lawnmowers, how many lawnmowers do we have, how many X marks or are those zero turns that we have right now?
We have four of the zero turns, and what happened was they were all purchased at once. So unfortunately, they all should be replaced at once because they all have approximately the same number of hours on them. They're used on a daily basis on a ball field, cemeteries, whatever.
What's the useful life of those?
It, yeah, it depends, I mean, they're out in rough weather, but these are. These things were, they have approximately a thousand.
Scott, I found the presentation, they were bought in twenty fourteen, so seven, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, you know, seven years old, they've got almost seventeen hundred hours on them now.
Thank you, and that was, my next question was, why are we buying four, but since they're about the same time, that makes sense.
They were all purchased as one, right?
That makes sense. And so my next question is for someone on the fire department in regards to. This, this project, I mean, I, I know one forty and two forty are the most used stations that I've seen. Two forty, you know, it's been demonstrated that it is undersized and underutilized. So, so my question is, why are we looking to replace four forty, which from my understanding is mostly used as a storage facility? More so than two forty, which is an active, you know, I see people going in, out, they're all, you know, trucks leaving, I mean, that's wherever it is. So what's the rationale behind that? Why are we focusing on four forty and not two forty? Or three forty, you know, any of those. So just give me some of the background of why we picked these three, I understand one forty and the, the foundation issues. But why was two forty not involved?
Just for your understanding, Station one forty, which is sixty-four Crystal Lake Road, and Station two forty is Three Roads Road, which is out of one ninety-five. Those are your main two firehouses in this community. And we, a couple of years ago, did a study and looked at Station two forty in the training center, because they go as a package. Back when we replaced Station one forty, which was the old white firehouse located at Route thirty in Mountain Spring and. Route seventy-four there, that's the firehouse ours replaced, and we built the new firehouse at sixty-four Crystal Lake Road that was supposed to have the training center. But unfortunately, back in the day, the council or the town residents did not want to see the training center located there, they wanted centrally located. That's when they took the property of where the training center is now by intimate domain. And basically just laid a training center out on a piece of concrete of the space that was available. So what you have is what you have at, at the training center, that goes along with Station two forty. Which Station two forty and the training center has always been viewed by the community as a asset to the community as far as taxable space or commercial space, which is a great, no doubt about it. There's been several businesses that have approached the town in past fifteen years that have been interested in buying either the training center or Station two forty. But that's up to a planning and zoning and town council and commission and management, as far as what they're going to do. We've looked at adequate spaces throughout the town, that we did a study a, a few years ago to look to see where we could put. We've looked at adequate spaces throughout the town that we did a study a few years ago to look to see where we could put station 240 and the training center. And it was pushed that we were going to go up to Cross Farms. So right now I think we're in a holding pattern till someone is, you know, looking at those two pieces of property and would make a fair market value to be able to buy those pieces of property. And then hopefully we will have a piece of property in town. Similar to station 140, 64 Crystal Lake Road, the town got a deal on that property when that firehouse was built from the landowner. So hopefully we'll find a space that's centrally located to the town that we can adequately relocate that station. If something doesn't happen in the next five to a few years, yeah, you seriously have to look at the training center and station 240. That's your main project. And if the commercial space takes off. But we've looked at different parcels. We've looked at an air rack. We've looked at different areas, but yeah, station 240 is just as bad as probably Garing Road. No doubt about it. Station four, that's been more active over the last several years because it depends on the membership in the community. So we have more volunteers that are up at station 440 on Plains Road that that truck is actually responding a lot more than maybe Garing Road. But a few years ago, Garing Road was one of the highest response rates at nighttime and weekends. So during the daytime, the staff goes out to those outlined stations. In an ideal world, you would have enough staff to put a staff member at each like we used to at Garing Road and Plains Road during the daytime. The problem with that is the ambulances are running so much that those staff members that were on Garing Road and Plains Road. They're supposed to relocate to the main two firehouses when a call goes out. Well, it just wasted the town's money of them going back and forth and not getting anything done. So I've consolidated the staff to be three solid bodies, three solid bodies at the two main firehouses. So then we have adequate crews as we move forth. But responding from station 240 to Charles Street or way in that side of town. You're looking at a nine to 11 minute response time. It's a pretty long time for someone to get out to that area, especially during the daytime. So as the staff grows, as the town grows, that's where we want to make sure that we still have the adequate facilities. We did a study and I'll put it out there to everybody right now. What's the first question that is asked of you when you buy a house in the town of Tallinn? What's the closest fire hydrant and what's the closest fire department? That is because of taxes. So if you go to close a firehouse, you got to zone out the town because your taxes and your fire insurance will go up that much higher. So that got into a political debate probably about five years ago. So station 240 started off at a two bay firehouse, added on two more bays, and then the volunteers built the rest of it in the back. They, they put that on, they put the additions on and everything else. So, you know, we've made do with what we have, but we're operating out of a shoebox.
Thank you. So I just, I am a big fan of the idea of using Morton buildings, especially for 340 and 440. And now obviously 140 with the foundation issue, that's a little different, but what's the expect? Maybe it's in that presentation we had a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago, but what's the expected life? For use, usable life or something like this?
I think it was 50, 50 years, I believe. That's the number I remember. Also, there's a bit of a batting order to them where, you know, should this go through and should referendum pass everything? I think working with the chief and every, and everybody else, we would very likely start with 140 first to fix the crumbling foundation issue. We wouldn't do them all at the same time because you can't have all your apparatus offline. You would do one at a time, complete one, then move on to the next. And I believe in some of the modeling that, you know, Lisa has worked up, we've, we've taken that into consideration that they wouldn't all come on at the same time. You know, you would probably spend a year or whatever, one season on 140. Then the next would do 340 and then 440. So that way you can play musical chairs with all of the trucks and stuff. And that they're not all done at the same time. So that you like, like Chief said, you don't want to have all your houses down or firehouses down. Cause then, you know, not only would insurance skyrocket, but it's just not a safe situation. You wouldn't want to have somebody with a response time of 20 something year, minutes. It would be really bad.
20 years would be really unfortunate, Mike.
Yeah. I was thinking of useful life, you know.
Kurt, do you have any other questions?
Nope. That's all I have. Thanks.
Sorry, I thought, I thought John was next, but I do have a few questions. So start with Parks and Rec regarding the tennis courts over, I think it's on Old Cat Hall. Was that, when was the last time those were repaired and replaced? I think that would be directed to Bruce, say, I think is on tonight, if he knows, or if it's Scott.
Do either of you guys know?
But I do believe it's been at least 10 years before, when they, they resurfaced that last.
Okay. And then for the, the pickleball court that's being proposed, is that replaced? Is that currently a pickleball court or is it being replaced or is it replacing a different recreational purpose? Like, is it a basketball court right now? I just haven't been to here in COVID and sometimes.
Right now it's the old ice rink that doesn't hold any kind of water or anything like that. It's been just sitting there as a, an area that's been unused and kind of like an eyesore. And with pickleball kind of growing, especially with the older population and becoming extremely popular. We thought it would be a good idea to, since they've been looking for a, a single designated area just to play for themselves. Instead of taking away from tennis, we could fit four courts down there. So that's what the advisory board and myself, that would be a good. For use of that area.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Next question, I think probably goes more directly to Bruce in terms of the cross farms rear lot plan. Is that an expansion project for the most part? And does it kind of create more accessibility to the other fields? I believe we talked about something around this line, I think last year, maybe in the summertime.
To me?
Steve.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. That was for Scott, I think for the cross.
Yeah, that one, that one falls more under us. A couple of years ago, when we were opening up Adam's Adventure. We enlisted the services of Gardner and Peterson to design both parking lots. And if you go down there at any given time with no lines painted or anything, people just park anywhere they want. And with the way it was laid out, we'd be able to fit a lot more vehicles in there. You know that the, the disc golf is huge. They have the soccer fields down and back. There's times where they have ballgames going everywhere and, and the lots in those, the roads on the way in are filled. So we've, we've pushed this off for, you know, many years and it's, it's a matter of going in and, and reclaiming the top. And then paving it, lining it so that the traffic flow will be going all one direction and they'll loop around and come out along the wooded side.
Okay. And that would also probably help maintain some of the fields around. I don't know if anybody, you said people are parking wherever. I assume that means.
Correct.
They're, they're.
On the grass.
To get their kids out as quickly as possible to the game if they're running late versus, you know, using the appropriate spots and proper gravel or paint. Okay. And then a question regarding the, the tree removal. I know we had a lot of discussions. Hurricane last year. In terms of your assessment for the trees, you have our tree warden, but do we use a state forester as well to assess trees that are along the roadways in town?
What we have is we have, we go out on an annual basis and or for, for bids for tree removals. And the contractor that we have now is a licensed arborist. So if needed, we will ask, we'll get their opinion from them. But we have a town tree warden and then there's two deputies, myself being one and my operations manager, Paul Russell being the other one. Bill Paculis is the tree warden. Bill retired from his real job, I believe, a year ago, year and a half ago. And he and his wife travel a lot. So while they're out, we're able to fill in and in his absence.
Okay. Yeah. And I was only asking that question in part, I'm missing the conservation commission meeting tonight, but they were talking at their last meeting about possibly finding an arborist or a forester due to the, all the Emerald Dash or, you know, issues and the gypsy moths. They were trying to find a resource that a town might have to help assess trees within their conservation areas for possibly like a long-term tree removal and assessment project. So I was also unsure if that would be relevant to, to your tree removal process as well.
Yeah. So like I say, we utilize the contractor we have who is licensed arborist, but neither the tree warden or either of the two deputy wardens are licensed arborists in the state.
Okay. Thank you. And then the next couple of questions would go to Dr. Will. I was looking at the, the wireless proposal, 130,800. Does that overall increase kind of the speed, strength and stability? I'm understanding probably that there's been a lot of challenges this, this past year and a half with COVID or this past year. But I'm curious what the current situation stands with our wireless network for the school systems and what this does going forward.
Yeah, that's a, that the wireless nodes there are part of a five-year plan for district wireless access point upgrades. So they, they're part of a reoccurring plan that the IT department has. Every five years, it's unlikely that the new wireless standards, you know, change more often than that, but usually they will change. And that can create a significant issue with respect to speed. We are now heavily dependent on wireless, especially now with all the Chromebooks and everything. Most of the connection has gone from those cat five or six connections that are still, you know, part of the world. And, you know, they plug, you plug into the wall with the RJ45s and so on. But it's moved over now to the vast majority of these connections that the kids are using. And the backbone is all wireless. Same thing. And I guess in our homes, we're seeing that too. We're not tethered to the wall. So it is part of a five-year plan, that particular expenditure request that's in there. And if we don't do that, it's almost like all the devices we have run, you know, either not at all or much more clunky manner. And that's roughly why it's, it's in that kind of cycle.
Okay. Thank you. And I was looking up, I was trying to find like the minutes regarding the artillery lifts. I'm sure that's probably just sort of like a cherry picker style piece of equipment. When I first read it, I was thinking artillery, military and wondering if Lou was going to help us get a get something in terms of some artillery for the town, but I assume that's meant more for Peter Saba to use for repairs and maintenance to our, our school facilities.
Yeah, I think that's actually an articulating lift. Although artillery sounds better and it sounds a lot more fun than articulate and articulating. But you know, what I'll do is I'd like to hand the ball off to Peter on that one. He's joined us this evening. You know, I know he's, he's, he has 100,000 uses for that. He's always trying to do something. So Pete, you want to, do you mind if I hand the floor over to Pete for that?
No, 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 that's fine. Welcome, guys. Thank you. In piggybacking on what Walt's gonna say. The reason for the proposed lift is to really just to build some in-house capacity that we have on the schools to be able to do a lot more projects in, in-house with taking care of the exterior of our, of our buildings. We have probably sustained in the last three years, close to $18,000 in rental fees that were related to repairing the facade of the high school. We've caulked the entire outside of the, of, of that building. We've re-mortared the outside. We caulked the greenhouse. We installed the weather station. We've done exterior cameras. We put up exterior signage. One of the things we're looking at right now is to replace the banners that are going up the high school drive, which are all faded and torn. We've had issues with trying to repair our flag poles, especially at the top where the mastar and you have your pulleys and so on that are at the, at the top of the flags. We've had a lift the entire summer, this past summer at the middle school where we did a window replacement project there. We replaced 55 windows, I think was the final number. We had to caulk them all. We repainted all the metal, metal panels. We did new signage there, there on the outside. We have had to replace some of the LED light poles that were outside the warranty for Honeywell. We've, we actually had to do some of the site lighting at Birch Grove even during, before the construction project. When we set up the portables, we needed to make sure that the parking lots were actually lit still. TIS, we repainted all the outside windows. We caulked them all. So we are finding more and more uses for that lift. We have a lot more exterior surveillance. In the last five, five years, we've gone from 73 cameras in our schools to roughly 217. Many of which look at areas like the playgrounds and other areas that weren't covered prior. So the request is, is really something that I intended to be able to share with Scott and his, and his public works crew as well. But I think it's a resource that I think both of us could definitely find useful.
No, that's great. I, I did find the minutes from, I think it was October when there's discussion about, about it and that, you know, you might be able to get beyond 6,000 hours worth of use. As well as, you know, just, it seems like it's more sensible to have this as a long-term investment piece of equipment than going to a rental for about, I think it looks like 6,800 a month plus fees and probably insurance you have to pay for, for renting it for your use versus owning it outright.
Yeah. And the, you know, and there's another fact factor too, Steve, is that now take, take for instance, lights. If, if there's a light pole out, I don't want to hire Rockburn just to do one pole. In essence, it's not cost effective. So what I wait is for, you know, two, three or four poles. But that means that we are not lighting certain areas. And I don't want them to doing that if we don't have to go that route because we don't have a resource in place to be responsive, you know? So I try to be savvy on how we spend our funds. But sometimes that means I have to wait, you know, till a, you know, till a project happens to actually do certain things.
It's also human hours. So Pete Lou, you know, he's able to act quickly and then he can move on to the next door. His, or the guys can move on to the next project fairly quickly, but if it's not available, all that planning around it not being there is, is human hours lost and there's some productivity lost. So it's, it's just being a lot more productive with the unit than without it. Pete, don't you agree with that? You know, like you can just have more productivity, less wasted human hours. And I think the, the, there was a proposal to have a bungee jumping. So it'd be a cost, a cost, you know, charge for that. Something in that area too.
You're getting heckled.
I know. We're used to it.
She doesn't believe you. She's not buying it.
She's never tried bungee jumping off, off an articulating lip.
She's a 15 pound plug. That'll probably kill her.
Okay. So I, I had one other question. This is probably more, more of a question of semantics, but in terms of the artificial turf replacement for the high school. Is there a reason why it's placed under Parks and Rec and, and not a, a board of education categorized? Or is it, is it because we utilize it sort of as a, as a shared use space in terms of rental to certain leagues and other organizations? I don't know. That's a question for, for.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Is it that, Will or Mike? If, if anyone's able to. I mean, this, well, that's, isn't this called out in the turf and maintenance agreement specifically this? Uh, maybe Dr. Will, do you want to take that one? I'm not sure.
Yeah. I mean, I think we've, we, you know, we have been in the, in the agreement that he's referring to or Mike's referring to. You know, we've been discussing how to best handle that and exactly, you know, what, what bucket it falls into. But it really overall is, it's a lar, it's, it's a, it's significant investment for the town and has been and was. It was, and it was a community effort. Organizations that were involved, you know, raised money for it. And there were various ones that had committed to it. Some came through, some couldn't come through. But the bottom line is that it's really a community field and it's used in that way. I know that Yukon also, there's a Yukon rents it out. I think the town benefits somewhat from that. You know, and it's been a community resource. So I think it's just, you know, finding the right bucket to fall into, but all the buckets are still owned by Tallinn. And at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's something we need to look at that is a fairly, you know, fairly significant investment. And it's a few years out, but it's, it's on here just to make sure that, you know, we're keeping our eyes on, on, you know, what's coming. Yeah. And I do think it's shared.
Kind of call when that was first passed, wasn't it? Wasn't that also paid partially with the steep grant back in? Was it early 2010, 2011 or 2012, maybe? Was it early twenty-ten, twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve maybe? Or is it older than that?
Oh, God, it's I know it's before my time. I when I came in, I know they were trying to find the final ways to come up with the remaining funds. But it has to be, we're coming up on its useful life. So we are looking at like ten years.
All right, that covers it for me for now. If I have any, I'll let everyone circle around and ask questions.
Sorry, John, I was talking and wasn't on mute, so.
Oh, thank you. Change gears here a little bit on page eight. Other town administrative administration projects, general fund portion of the WPCA eighty-five thousand four forty-four. And so this would go to either Scott or Mike. Is that a result of the Vernon Sewer Improvement Project or is that something else?
That's the Vernon Sewer. I'm just trying to catch up to you on page eight. But so the other town administration projects, the eighty-five four four four, if you go back to the slide prior, that's the twenty-one, twenty-two general fund contribution. The other delta that makes up the difference between that and two eighteen five four two, that's the contribution from the CNRE. And then the thirty-three grand we haven't available. So we're not double counting that. It's just I wanted to show it under the general fund portion of the website.
Okay, cuz it is, wasn't there a budget line item in in the capital plan that was? Can't remember the exact number. I want to say about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year moving forward, I think in perpetuity to cover that that project.
Correct.
So this is something, this is part of that though, right?
Yeah, so the overall amount is one sixty-four nine oh six. That's the number that you'll see in the capital plan for the next fifteen or sixteen years. But but this year, in order to make up the one sixty-four nine oh six, we have the ability to use three different funding sources. That is the general fund of eight, the eighty-five thousand number you mentioned. The CNRE is ninety-nine thousand five five eight and thirty-three thousand five forty from available account balance. If you add those numbers up, I believe it goes up. And so the the total amount of the plant this year is actually a little bit higher because I think there was a ramp. Yeah, I see Lisa shaking her head. My mistake, I misspoke earlier. So this year it's two eighteen five four two. Last year was actually higher, I believe, too. It was sort of a ramp up period, the first couple of years, but the going forward number is that one sixty-four nine oh six. So this year is actually a little bit higher, but we're able to pad that by using other sources other than just the general fund. So the big change will be going forward when it's fully the general fund that absorbs the overall one sixty-four nine oh six. We have one more year next year where there's still like thirty or so thousand dollars that from available funds. So that will only be paying one thirty-four nine oh six next year, and then the other thirty thousand comes out of available funds. But for the next fifteen years thereafter, it's going to be the full one sixty-four nine oh six without any other padding. Unless we unless we find, you know, unless there's influx of money to CNRE or something like that, we we might be able to retool it. But we're showing at this point, without having any other source like that, we're showing the full weight of it being charged to the general fund after next year.
Okay. And then cargo van number seventy-five for forty-three thousand two sixty-seven. What is the what is the purpose of that? What is that used for?
That van is the the white van that you typically see at our public buildings. It carries a variety of supplies and tools and what have you for changing light bulbs within the municipal buildings, the air filters, doing repairs on leaking sinks and things like that. And the van that they have now is, you know, your typical cargo van. You can't stand up in it where this one is designed more. So you have more more space inside. You can utilize the space better and you can actually stand up inside and find the tools that you're looking for.
Okay, so the the condition of the van that we currently own, what is that like? Mileage and and the general condition of it?
Yeah, I can tell you, John, it's it's a two thousand eight Ford van. It's got a little over ninety thousand miles on it right now.
Okay.
And that is, just so you know, that typically in a summer, we hire a minimum of three summer help. People, they go out, they weed whack our cemeteries, they do mowing into cemeteries along with ball field prep. Right now, we're putting three kids or three individuals, I'll say, in vehicles such as Jeep Grand Cherokees and putting gas cans in the back with weed whackers, which is not safe. So the intention is that we would take this van and set it up inside in a safe manner to transport the summer staff around.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And then my final question for now is getting back to the lift. Does the does the town have a lift at this point or no?
We do, but ours is basically what they call a man lift. It's it's more what you would find for inside work. You would put it on a flat surface. It's got hard rubber tires on it. It doesn't. It doesn't have a telescoping or articulating feature to it. It's basically just to bring you straight up and down.
Okay.
Yeah, we we have shared that. We've shared that with the schools, but it just doesn't work in so many applications that Peter and his crew and the.
Okay, so that is not an appropriate piece of equipment for what Pete needs. Is that correct?
No, correct.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
That's all I have for now.
Cassandra.
Sorry, just done meeting. All right. So a couple of questions, starting with that lift. So the town already owns a lift. Why aren't we sharing this? That's my big question. And like, rather than every department had their own. And then how many sweepers do we currently have? Since what I understand, we have two sweepers already, but we still hire outside sweepers to sweep our roads. So I'm not sure why we have two sweepers, but we still hire outside sweepers. And then what's happening with our stuff once we upgraded our equipment? What are we selling it? Are we getting good prices for that? They're just going to auction? Is it sitting there? Is it not being used? What's going on with that? Those are the big ones. So those are the three. Did I say three things?
That that sheet that Mike had that he said you were welcome to use a magnifying glass on.
That one. Yeah.
That makes it, that makes it a challenge. But if you look at that, you'll see that a lot of our equipment, such as the the grader that is being proposed, that's that's back in the nineteen nineties, I believe, that doesn't even move anymore. Our sweeper is used only on an emergency basis and it's only one sweeper that we have.
So we don't have two sweepers in town?
No, no.
Just one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in, I believe it was year five where we showed the vac on, we have what is called a vac all right now, which is just used for cleaning out catch basins, pipes, things along that nature. We spent a lot of lot of money, a lot of time rewelding the the body on the back. That's subject to very abusive material that goes in there and it tends to rot out very quickly. So we can't, that virtually has no vacuum power left to it at all. So we contract out our catch basin cleaning as needed and the same with the sweeping. The sweeping isn't as demanding because we only use salt. We we don't put sand on the roads anymore.
Which I wish you, I wish you put sand instead of salt. My car would appreciate it. I come from the West Coast. We don't use salts over there.
No, they're, well, they're they're different on the West Coast.
Well, we don't have broadway cars either.
No, no, that's for sure.
So so this, the one sweeper that's being proposed to be purchased is because the current one sweeper we have is not working then?
Yeah, it's it's on its last legs. We just use it as an emergency vehicle. If we go out, like, let's say somebody like Willamette Waste has a hydraulic leak. And we go out and we apply sand on a road to to absorb the wa, the oil. We'll go out with our sweeper. Instead of calling in a contractor, we'll go out with our sweeper to clean up material like that. But if we're doing, if we're doing a road project where we have to go in and pave or whatever, we'll we'll typically cluster a few roads together and hire a contractor to come in and and do the sweeping ahead of schedule.
All right. So would it, would it be possible to still use a contractor at all or is it really necessary to buy a brand new sweeper? Or new? I shouldn't say brand new, just a new one for the town.
The the MS four program, which is the municipal separate storm and sewer system program, they require that we at least go out and evaluate all our catch basins on an annual basis. They also require that we go out and sweep the roads for, to keep the debris from going into catch basins. And with the money that we have set aside in the budget for the catch ba, for the sweeping, it's it's not enough to do the whole town by any means. So if we're trying to do the town in one year, we don't have the money to do any catch basin cleaning and vice versa. If we try to clean, we have over three thousand catch basins in town. And they can typically do seven or eight a day at, you know, a fair amount. It it ends up coming up to about a hundred, hundred and fifty dollars a catch basin.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Scott. I appreciate that. Appreciate that. And then you did say that we are, when we have the equipment, like you said, some stuff isn't sellable. But what about some of the other things we turn over after five years or so? Are we selling that? I don't know if you know that, Scott, or trucks and stuff or.
What happens is, what we'll do is when we go out to purchase a a new piece of equipment or a vehicle, we will have whoever we're awarding the contract to come in and give us a price on the piece of equipment. And if it's not something that's going to really benefit us and it's something that's has any value, we'll put it back into the fleet until we get, you know, we have the opportunity to either trade it in or it reaches the end of its useful life. And then we'll we'll put them off to the side and then the council will authorize us to sell them, declare them as surplus and then we'll we'll go out for private bids on people who want to purchase that stuff.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Just moving on to the lift for the Board of Ed. So, you know, the town does have its own lift and the fire department has a bucket truck. So are we not allowed to share or what 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 is the rationale for having? I know you told me that it was helping you get more things done, but the town owns a bucket truck already. So, I mean, a lift.
Yeah, I don't know if if you had heard it, as far as that, they were saying that it's not, it isn't actually the kind that the town has is not sufficient for the kind of work that the board is doing. That was that was shared a minute or two ago there.
Yeah. What about the, what about a bucket truck, though? Doesn't that allow the same kind of like rotation?
I don't, I don't think the maneuverability of it is, but Pete, I think you're still on here. You're the expert on.
Well, the the bucket truck that the town has probably has a twenty-five to thirty-foot height, working height. The lift that I proposed has a sixty to eighty-foot working height. The other thing is I I know Chief Ly, Ly tells on and I don't want to have or have or have to count on him for doing such things as strapping snow blowers to his ladder truck and then using that in a purpose to get that on the roof of the school so that we can snow blow. That's not the intention of what that ladder truck is supposed is supposed to be used for. It really doesn't have that type of of weight rating for that. And that was really just triaging. So the primary use of this lift is to cut down on response times, to cut down on the amount of outside contractors we now have to rely on to end up doing work as well as to increase our in-house capacity to do more work and more future projects ourselves. So, you know, when I mentioned that we actually painted the hole outside of the middle school and the hole outside of TIS, we actually did that with summer labor. Okay, so these were college kids that are not getting paid twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour. Okay, so we were able to do these projects much more cheaply and get the same result with some of the methods that were that 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 were used. So that's the, that's the biggest, the biggest pros for for pushing them.
Cassandra, anything that's operated off of my ladder truck, they need to be certified. So like, like P is saying, unfortunately, we 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 can't use.
DOT certified on those?
It's through the NFPA and fire classes that they have to be aerial certified. So if someone fell off of a ladder truck and they weren't aerial certified, OSHA would have a field day. But I'm willing to share if Pete needs a and Walt needs a new bucket truck. I am willing to look at a new bucket truck.
Those are expensive. Those are like one eighty.
The fire department's bucket truck is a one-point-four million dollar asset. So if, you know, you'd like me to start looking, I would be more than happy to help you out with that.
That sounds like a fun one. Good shopping trip. All right. Thank you, chief. I appreciate that. All right. I appreciate the answers. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions before I go? All right, here we go. Dr. Will, you're killing me. Hundred and forty thousand dollars. What are we paving? What is this sidewalk stuff? Please, tell me. I'm just starting with you because you were first on the list here. It's not personal, just.
Well, I mean, you know, the the paving of, you're talking about the TMS paper, the BOE paving here.
It says BOE paving, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Pete, I see you looking. Somebody tell me.
You're talking about the parking lot, paving the parking lot. It's it's just, have you been in the parking lot lately? We've lost, we've lost children in that parking lot. They're falling through the severe cracking and degradation. Parents can't even come in.
Listen, listen, there are times when I would let you keep my kids there, okay?
Your dog would have fallen into the, you know, fallen into one of those holes and we never get them out. We'd have to get John's ladder truck or something to get.
Why am I not finding it? Where the heck?
Those are two, two, two projects, thirty thousand, I think, for the TIS front entry sidewalk there. And then one, one-ten for the entire first student area at Tallinn Middle School. And that is also to, one of the projects that we are looking at to do this summer at the middle school is that we had already set aside the the two, the two hundred and fifty-nine thousand to do paving at the middle school parking lots. So the one-ten would hopefully finish most of the middle school minus possibly the access road in the back. And I believe we would get to the point where that entire campus would actually be finished. And then the thirty thousand is to deal with the con, the concrete swelling that is right at the main door at TIS. As part of the Honeywell project, they repaved the asphalt sidewalks, the narrow portions, but kept the concrete portion there that's right surrounding that single light pole that is there. And you are seeing a lot of repairs that were done, probably five or six repairs over the last ten to fifteen years, because you'll see the different types of concrete that was actually used. Some, they used a broom finish, some they've done other types. So you're just getting to the point that the amount of joints would almost mirror the design of Tallinn High School when you walk in there. So it's getting to the point where that's just gonna need to be dug dug up and done properly. Because we've been nursing that along for a very long time.
Killing, killing me. Okay, Mike, you talked about the depreciation thing and. What, who, who, what, huh, huh? Somebody saying something? No? All right, Mike, you had talked about the depreciation stuff. Are any of the newer vehicles being depreciated? So we don't see this. I'll be honest with you, looking at ten new pieces of equipment or vehicles in one year, I think is it's a very hard pill to swallow and I'm used to taking some pretty big daily vitamins. So are we looking at the depreciation to try to level this out? So we're not getting hit with all of this in one year? You know, we have ten this year, seven. You know, we have ten this year, seven next year and four the year after, for major pieces of equipment.
Uh, I would say yes, I mean, I think, well, I think Lisa and I, we, maybe she can help me out with this too. But we usually do try to spread it out, but it's the time right now where I think a lot of these are coming due. Um, you know, I think you you're hearing it from the department heads that uh the these, a lot of these trucks and are are at or have exceeded their useful lives. We don't necessarily replace things on a whim, so um we do build in the depreciation. Um, you know, to try to smooth it out so that, you know, we have the money in the bank to be able to to put towards purchasing the new vehicle when it's time for it. But a lot of these that are being funded, these larger, the ones that aren't being funded by cash, but the trucks and and the fire and the ambulances and all that. Those are either being funded out of the ambulance fund or um debt. And uh, I'm not sure that, I mean, maybe Lisa, is that, we don't necessarily, we depreciate those, but that's not part of that, right? The public works vehicles, well, I'll let you go, go ahead.
Hi Lisa.
Hi there, okay, just trying to unmute, um, let me just clarify so you can understand. The only um vehicles that we depreciate are mainly for the um. The fire marshal vehicle, the building inspector vehicle, the public works director's vehicle. Um, and then the fire chief's vehicle, when we purchase that, we will build in depreciation once we buy it. And we build it in to accumulate funds, so in the future, you won't have the big lump sum seventy thousand dollar bill. For example, um to have to, you know, come up with the funds all at once. Um, so what we do is we build that in each year so that when it comes time to replace it. We have most of the money, of course, you know, the cost of vehicles to walk, but we're depreciating it at historical cost. Um, so we're doing it for that, we're doing it for um just a few of the public works um vehicles. Or um Paul's pickup truck and a few of the the bigger pickup trucks that. That are in the the system for the more of the higher level. The rest of the vehicles are purchased either through general fund, if we have the funds. Or we will, if it's large enough, we do debt. Um, same thing, the the other depreciation is for, there's a couple vehicles at the board of ed. For a pickup truck and I think a van or something, I I want to look at the the list. So those are the only things being depreciated right now. At some point, we would really love and and it has to, it can't, it couldn't do it now. Because of the impact on the budget. But once the debt starts falling off the books, we really would like to start using some of the money that we would have paid for debt. To start building a reserve, to start doing pay-as-you-go cash rather than issuing debt for all of these things, such as the large dump trucks. Um, you know, larger pieces of equipment. It it would certainly be nice also to start building a reserve by getting everything on a depreciation type schedule. And putting a little bit of money away each year so that we're not hit with these large hits. Uh to replace equipment in the future, but right now, this is the only financing way we can get through this. So to answer the question on depreciation, not everything is depreciated at this time. Um, you will see in the financial report certain depreciation, but that's more on a gap basis. For reporting certain items, but it's certainly not any money being put away anywhere. In that respect.
Okay.
Was I okay?
Yep, yep, that that does it, um, so I'm gonna stay, gonna stay focused on you right now, Scott. Don't worry, John, I'm coming for you next, um, Scott, uh. I'm gonna need you to kind of walk me through the uh, um, I know we have four, four mowers that are zero turn and um we bought them all at the same time. But I'm not a fan of uh of having that schedule, because that means that, you know, we have every X amount of years. It looks like this was what, uh, seven years ago, we're gonna have to buy more, is there any way to sta- stagger this out over a couple of years? Yeah, I'm mute, hon.
Oh, that better?
Yeah, that's much better.
There we go. I mean, i- if that's uh the council's wish, we could do two this year and two the following year. It's just that, you know what it's like when pieces of equipment start to uh get old, you're starting to put good money uh. Into a a piece of equipment that you're not gonna recoup that money from. Um, if if, again, like I say, this is, this is what we're proposing. If if um, if you'd rather hold off, it, those aren't a a huge. That's gonna save, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars, it's not a huge number.
I'm just thinking from a planning perspective too, like I said, I'm looking at right now, I'm looking at ten new pieces of equipment between vehicles and equipment in one year. Which is, that's a lot.
Well, we've, we've, you know, and and this is no reflection on anybody, I know we all have our jobs to do. And trying to keep the taxes down and and the mill rate down and everything else, but we've kicked the can down the road a long time. I think everybody has seen that and this is what happens eventually, it 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 catches up with you. Just, you look at that that payloader, that's our frontline piece of equipment with a um. A weight management system on it, it's called a load right system. And we're able to tell exactly how much salt we put on each truck. And when they come in and they dump it out, we we reweigh it so that when we're challenged by whoever, we can say, yeah, this is how much went out on that route. Um.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when you say payloader, are you talking about the replacement of the front end loader at two seven five?
Front end loader, yeah, and what's happening is that will get pushed down the line. And the second oldest one will be, become our oldest one and it's replacing a vehicle that's a two thousand two loader. Which is unheard of.
I'm trying to look at in the sheet, like the 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 sheet unique glasses for, I was trying to figure out that, I was getting there. You got ahead of me here, you got ahead of me on the questions, but um, so that's a two thousand and two, you said?
Yeah, it's uh, it's towards the bottom of the the highway division, number twenty Talon. That's the CAT nine thirty-eight, that's the one that will be traded in or go to surplus. And not too many people want to buy a two thousand two uh loader unless you're somebody just starting out in the construction field. And you're willing to take what you can get.
And that um, that one there, you said we have two?
We have three um loaders altogether, we have one that stays in the yard, that's the the one we're looking to replace. The other one is up at the high school, which has a big pusher on it for clearing out that parking lot and it goes over to the middle school. And then our third one is either stationed up at Baxter Street for handling uh the materials that we store up there. Or it's used over at the old recycling center on Old Stafford Road.
And how old are those two?
One of those is the uh nine twenty-four, which is the um. That's the one that's up at the high school, that's a two thousand fourteen.
Okay, and um the other one.
And the other one, the other one, yeah, the other one was two thousand and two, and then there's one on the park side as well.
Is that the one at Baxter Street or is the park, so there's another one?
We have three total.
Alright, so the two.
The one that, uh, the other one is a two thousand and six.
Yep, cat loader under equipment at the uh, on the parks, it's about halfway down under equipment.
The one you're looking at reloaded, that that doing is the one that handles the um.
The load right system, yes.
And the other two don't have that load right system, correct?
Correct, correct, it's a computerized system that keeps track of everything. Through the operator, the operator punches in the vehicle number that it's going into and then it weighs it. We can generate a report off of that.
Okay, alright, um, blah blah blah, hold on, that gets me back, you you threw me there, hold on. Oh, um, what's the, what is the expected hour limit on those um, the zero turns?
So I, we've, we've actually surpassed it, I mean, they they currently have. It was a misprint on the the sheet that you have, it said they have a thousand running hours, right now they have thirteen hundred. Um, or they had thirteen hundred when we were putting this together. Um, by the time they're replaced, they will have about approximately seventeen hundred, somewhere in the fourteen, fifteen hundred hour range. Um, knowing if they're out mowing the grass, when it's uh, when it's wet, when it's long, when there's leaves in it. Um, rough terrain and, you know, these things all all weigh into the uh, um. I don't want to call it abuse, but the, what they're subject to as far as um, you know, working conditions. So you, it's, it's hard to say that the magic number is, you know, a thousand or twelve hundred. But it's, it also has to do with their age and what what conditions they're in, or what the conditions are that they're they're operating under.
Okay, cuz that averages out to be like two hundred and something hours a a year. Ow, sorry, for what, for what we're doing in, um, okay. Uh, let's see, truck number fifty-three, snow operations, what kind of truck is that?
Current vehicle is uh an F four fifty, which is um. It's between, it's the uh, the next step up from a a large pickup truck, three fifties about the largest pickup truck you can get. Four fifty is one with a dump body on it, you can either go with a dump body, you can go with a flatbed body on it.
So it's a small dump truck?
Yes. And these things are, these, you know, vehicles have, where our vehicles are multipurpose. Not only are they used for doing ball fields and what have you during the uh, the construction season. But almost every vehicle we have has a snow plow on it for during the winter time. And unfortunately, what happens is if a larger truck goes down, we have to put these smaller trucks out on the road. And heavy snow really beats up the transmissions, the, you know, the whole truck on a uh, on a whole as a. You know, as it's out pushing this heavy snow around.
So this is, that's actually truck thirty-five, not fifty-three, right? Did I put it the wrong way? Is it fifty-three or thirty-five?
We, we have a truck.
Fifty-three, truck fifty-three.
It is truck fifty-three, where is that?
Uh, under the parks and facilities division.
Correct.
Parks and facilities, parks and facilities, why am I not?
Under schedule.
Under schedule.
Schedule replacement.
I found it, alright, so, it's a small dump truck.
Yep.
Um, and it is a, a two thousand and seven?
Yes.
Okay, and then park, parks truck thirty-eight, that's a hundred and four thousand. What is that?
It's a Ford uh F five fifty, two thousand and four year, Scott.
What year is that for replacement?
Uh, twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's currently uh, two thousand and four. But I'll let you.
It's a two thousand and four?
Yeah, looks, I'm just looking at that chart on the parks chart, um.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the backup on it.
It's in year two of the plan.
Okay, truck thirty-eight, just bear with me here, yeah, it's an F five fifty.
What does that mean to me?
That's, that's a uh. It's a little bigger than four fifty, it's still a small dump truck, but it's a heavier duty dump truck.
So we're, we're, we're replacing two dump trucks in two years?
Yes, the the um, what has happened in the five and a half years that I've been here? When we first started, more vehicles on the highway side were being replaced. Now we're trying, we're playing catch up with the uh, the park site.
Okay, truck twenty-seven, hundred and ninety-eight thousand, I'm assuming that's a dump truck?
Yes, that's uh one of your standard six-wheel international seventy-four hundred. Right now, it's got approximately eighty-six, eighty-seven thousand miles on it. Um, it's in um, fair condition at best. The unfortunately, these things have been subjected to the the uh, uh salt. Um, and they're just, they're rotting away, but the newer vehicles as they come in. We're putting a new uh undercoating system on it, it's, it's basically called the New Hampshire Oil. And it's, it's doing a great job, but we've also um, with the new truck wash. And the undercarriage washing system that we have in there, it basically floods the hole underneath of the the trucks. And it's, it's getting in every nook and cranny and keeping them much cleaner than what we're able to do before. So the the repairs on them as far as uh bodies and springs and frame rails and things like that. Should be uh um minimized an awful lot.
So that's gonna lead me to a a question that's not really on here. But um, I'm gonna wanna talk to you about it and that is the change in what we're using for the salt this year on the wa- on the roads. That we're not using the salt, we're using the molasses stuff, base stuff?
Yeah, what, well, what happened was. We get um a request from, it's either the state or from D A S. Or we'll get a request from CROG to commit to a certain amount of um road salt for the winter. And what happened this year was, for some reason, we didn't get one from CROG, we got one from uh just from D A S. And D A S is using um Morton salt. And Morton salt has their salt treated with molasses, where Cargill treats it with calcium chloride. The uh, they both work about the same, calcium chloride is is uh. The pros and cons are the calcium chloride works at a little bit lower temperature, but it bounces around a lot more when it comes out of the uh, the chemical. Or the material spreader, where the molasses tends to have a um retaining, a a holding. Um, character to it, when it melts, it goes into the the nooks and crannies on the road. And when it starts snowing again, you'll see it actually start to melt the snow before we've put anything down. The problem that took place in Talon and it does in a lot of, you know, very rural areas is. The deer like the molasses and we had a lot of road kills, cuz the deer would be out in the middle of the road. And we'd come along with a plow and they wouldn't move and, you know, or somebody'd come along with a car, come around a corner and hit them. Um, so that's when, I think it was seven years ago, eight years ago, they decided to go more with the calcium chloride. But we have both materials in the shed, we've been kind of mixing them together. And we're, we're just about through with the the molasses coated stuff and we're back to the other with the calcium chloride. There, again, they both work about the same, the, we're actually getting a better price on a calcium chloride now, by, I think it's about three dollars a ton savings.
I hate to say it, because I love the deers, but I'm more of a fan of the the molasses cuz of the least amount of chemicals that are in it. So I think I'm gonna wanna have a conversation on that one at some point to kind of look at it and understand better. I see John making faces about the deer over there, I understand, I get it, but you know, I'm thinking water and not, you know, is, this is a hard one for me. Um.
Our car volume went up, so it's, it's all good with the molasses.
Can we add like spices in it or something, make it less tasty?
Yeah, right, let's throw some cayenne in there, you know, just throw a little bit of cayenne in with it and the deer will stay away. Um, okay, uh mower, hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, what's the useful life on that? What's the useful hour life on that and what are we at? Because hot damn, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for a mower.
That's, that's the uh, the big wing mower, um, you know, it covers like a sixteen-foot span.
Yeah.
It it looks like a bat and it goes out, I mean, it's, nothing's cheap. Nothing's cheap today, look at you pay for a car.
For sixteen feet, we can get four zero-turn mowers for fifty thousand dollars. So walk me through the four-time price.
Well, we can hire three more. Well, we can hire three more guys to drive them too, to make up for the what that one guy is covering in one shot.
Killing me, Scott, you're killing me.
I'm just telling you the way it is.
So this is the, what do we use this at, and and what's the useful life and how many hours? So where are we using this massive mower?
This this one is more in the the big open areas such as like the the soccer fields. Athletic fields that we can, or you know, the fields like up at the schools where there's just a lot of open space. We have to use a smaller zero turns to get in and around the cemetery stones, things along those natures. You know, it it's just not feasible to bring something that size in. Useful life on it, it's, you know. It it depends on, again, it it depends on what's what it's being exposed to.
It's a fun mower, it's getting exposed to the grass.
Yeah, a lot of time.
Is it the Toro? It's the Toro, so it's a twenty-ten, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, you're 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 twelve years out on it. And I know, I know in years past, when I've said, well, it's, you know, I don't imagine anybody there drives a vehicle this old. Tammy, you've you've told me, yes, you do, you drive an older vehicle.
I just got a new car.
Well, see, that's why we need.
But my car, my my two thousand and five Envoy with the twenty-five thousand miles went to my nephew. Who thinks it's the best car he's ever owned, so, you know, she's still going, if that tells you anything. It's all about the oil changes. All right, uh, I see on here a shingled roof in the in the highway garage. Scott?
Yes.
Scott, you're gonna not, you're not gonna tell me that that has anything to do with the brand-new highway garage, right? Okay, cuz cuz Scott, I would kick you off the meeting.
Oh, please, come on, I I can go to bed. No, there was there was a part of the the old garage that still has a shingled roof on it, and it hasn't been in. Where like where the office building is, that's all the shingled roof, that none of that was included in that, the highway garage upgrade. The inside was all upgraded, but the shingled roof was not, and that's that's something that we really need to address. We we would hate to see that thing start leaking on the brand-new upgrades that we've done in there.
Are you redoing the whole roof, or are you adding another layer of shingles?
No, we'll take that, we would take that one off and and have, you know, the water and ice shield put on so that. We're protected around the eaves and any penetrations.
So you can't you can't put a second layer on it?
It's it's not really a good idea down there.
Okay. See, I think that's all I got for you right now. It's fairly easy this time. Um, Bruce. Since, of course, it wasn't that. You mentioned the pickleball going at the old basketball hoop, so I am not on rec anymore. So what's going on with the the possibility of the ice skating rink? Cuz that's what we use in the past year for an ice skating.
Uh, yeah, that hasn't been used, at least since I've been here almost seven years, and I know past that it just doesn't hold water.
Hold water, right?
Um, so I guess in regards to the ice rink. The board is gonna, they wanna do in the summer, a, I guess, like a general survey to the public, see. What the need is for that, and maybe some other amenities within the town. And kind of go from there. We have some pricing on the most portable. Rinks. That's kind of where it stands at this point in time, and then after that, obviously. Thing was, I believe, was his name, the gentleman's name, that was kind of forefronting. You know, he was gonna do a survey, I think, himself to get some. Concrete numbers on, you know, is this like a majority type thing that it really isn't a need in the community? And once we had the numbers for that, if if it's something that definitely the community needs, and we had an area to put. Then we would have to do the, obviously, that the crowdfunding we talked about.
Yep, where would you be looking to put that?
That we really didn't have a specific area, I think last we were talking about was where they put. Before I before I came to town, I believe they had one at Cranial Park in that lower parking lot below. Right along Cedar Mill Road, there's that lower parking lot of of Cranial Park. It's like a little strip and right.
That little parking lot, I don't think we ever had a rank there, though, that I know of, unless that's like way back.
Yeah, from my understanding, they had about the same kind of portable ring there. Um, it had gotten vandalized, so that's why they, I don't know, obviously, didn't buy a new one. Uh, the thoughts were there, is that there might be the lighting that they're looking for, and they could put barriers, if it's possible. You know, just kind of talking through discussions amongst us. Maybe put some barriers there where cars can't go in and out of that area, and. The ring could be put onto that as a flat surface to be. Maintain there's there's obviously, there's been also other talks of putting it in the field up there, but right. This adjacent to the basketball court. Uh, cuz there's lights and possibly, depending on the size and what it would do to the grounds in the men's softball field area. But the the thoughts were that we would want something possibly with lights. Since the majority of usage would most likely be either weekends or in the evening when people are out of work.
Okay, uh, let me see, I think that's the only thing that I had for you. You got out easy tonight, Bruce, look at that one question.
I like that.
Yeah, right, um, yeah, that's all I have for you. Uh, Dr. Woollett, I'm sorry, coming back to you, I have one more for you. The dishwasher and sink and the oven, that equipment, is that in any way built into the food services budget? Or is this something that doesn't get recovered as part of the 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 food services plan from the from the government?
No, it's, well, it's one, you know, we just put it in there as a capital expense, like, because anything like that for any part of the school system is big enough to be a capital expense. And, you know, especially now, the food service program is a is gonna be, you know, having a really hard time. I think you and I talked about it recently, that the food service programs across the state are struggling, and, you know, we're no different. We're very well managed, superiorly, you know, superiorly run, but, you know, we can't help being at a deficit this year. We're just, we're just not able to make the money back on those incidentals. Um, we don't make the money, you know, on the meals the way we do on the, you know, the snack line stuff, and so. You know, if any year, you know, we're just not in a position to be able to supply this, and the next two years or three years, it'll be kind of a struggle. So it's, it is just like any other piece of capital equipment for any other school. You know, while we will use it primarily for for serving and food service, yes, it's it's just, you know, makes sense to put in a capital request.
So, Dr. Wood, I'm gonna ask you to do something weird, can you send me an email? Um, just high level with the food services thing, because I'd like to pursue. Um, at the state level with the governor, with some of the the monies that are gonna be hopefully possibly coming in. If he can find a way to make the towns whole with the food services.
Sure, I know a lot of towns would appreciate that, so yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if you can send me something on that, I can try to get something up over quickly to kind of take a look at that. Cuz it is gonna be a big issue, I think, for for everybody, but it's something I think we are gonna try to need to address, so it doesn't hit you in the places.
Tammy, this is Pete, I just wanted to mention something too, those are commercial units, so. What whether we revamp the food service program or decide to. Al- alter how that runs, that will still stay as a school fixture, so. Um, if it's going into TIS, it's gonna live at TIS, so, and it's gonna stay there. Regardless of whether or not, you know, we decide to outsource food service differently, okay? So, you know, that's another re- reason why we also wanted to get that on the the school side. Because it's an asset to the school, it's not built into Abby's budget. You know, it's it's something that lives within that specific school.
Yeah, I mean, we we have no intention of outsourcing our food program, the just to make a just note. Pete's right, it's a big piece, and it's part of the infrastructure of the building, but, you know, we've benefited for years in Taland from. A very well-managed program that's, you know, cost-neutral for the town, so we we wanna keep that going, but. But anyway, you know, yeah, we we could use the help across the entire state of Connecticut, you know, we we have lower impacts than a lot of other places too. But, yeah, so.
Yeah, absolutely, um, I wasn't thinking of of us outsourcing it, that didn't, that doesn't really make much sense to me. I think that that Abby does a great job of of truly managing that program. And I I'm sorry, I will always complain about the the money my kids spent on cookies, fricking cookies, it's the most expensive thing on your menu.
You know, those cookies subsidize a lot, and by the way, you know, they're high-fiber natural cookies, so.
That's a lie.
You can't have too many of those cookies, I'll send you, I'll send you a couple.
Fricking cookies, man, I can't tell you how much money was spent on cookies. Um, all right, I think that's it I have for you guys, John, I left the best here for last, so. Let's see.
Doesn't look John's at his seat right now, he may have to step away, just.
He's he's like, he probably went to get a drink, knowing that he was. So, um, the new buildings that you have there, I'm looking at the pictures that Mike had up in that. And they look pretty significantly bigger, are they gonna fit on the existing footprints on the properties that we have?
So Chuck, our engineer that we've, uh, am I, actually, Mr. Rosen, are you okay with me speaking on this?
Uh, yeah, so I think specifically she's talking about three forty and four forty, so that's, yeah, the Morton buildings, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
So we've had the engineer come out and look at the foreprint. Um, and he's already flagged a property, I've been trying to be ahead of the curve. And I sent an email to the planning and zoning, asking if they wanted me to come to any meetings to give them a heads up. But most of the properties have already been flagged and looked at as far as space. The only thing that would come to my mind for question-wise is, I'm not gonna be here in ten years. So the towers that are behind the firehouses are the.
You sure?
Oh, I'm pretty. I'm I'm feeling really comfortable lately. Um, the towers that are behind the firehouses are the only thing that would come up to question. Station one forty, station three forty, station four forty, we've already looked at the septics, we've already gone through the septics and everything else. So we can't go to the sides or the back, and Scott's been, Scott's been a part of this whole plan, so we're we're limited as far as space-wise. But that's where we can go as far as the the width of the buildings, if that makes sense.
So they'll fit, they'll fit in the current land footprints?
As far as I've been guided by the engineer and everybody else, we believe so, so. Um, that's kind of, I mean, you know, Scott came up with the idea of going to the left versus the base to the left of station three forty. But everything else, we're pretty good with.
Three forty is Garing.
I'm sorry, Garing, three forty is Garing Road, and hopefully our video that's gonna be coming out, the corporation. Um, spent some money to do a video, and we're trying to give a. A video tutorial that we're gonna release to the town manager, if he approves of it, to release. But at least it'll give a walkthrough, like you're virtually walking through the stations and the property. Um, so it'll give a pre, you know, give an overview and then walking into the station, so you get a real feel like you're actually there. So hopefully, that will be finalized next week.
I think that's a good idea, just from a high-level perspective, I've said this before, I think. As much as I understand about the firehouses and the history and the age of them, I think we are gonna have. To be very transparent and open, and it's gonna be a bit of a sell to get people in town to be okay with us replacing two fire stations. Um, so I think anything that we can do to educate the public on what is currently there and why you're doing what you're doing is gonna be beneficial. Because I don't think anybody's gonna like the idea of spending five million dollars for two fire stations. We're gonna have to show how it's a good deal for the Mortons compared to brick and mortar, and, you know, be prepared to have that conversation with the public.
And we're trying to do everything we can, so hopefully, the the video that the corporation spent the money on and and did some fundraising to supply that to the town. Will hopefully be a virtual reality, because unfortunately, right now, we're at COVID times. And nobody wants to show up at the firehouses or come to walk through or be, you know, comfortable, so. We're we're at devil's, you know, devil's advocate right now.
Yeah, all right, so.
Can I add something to that?
I thought you were leaving, Scott.
You didn't give me permission yet.
What's up?
Well, I think it was probably three years ago when this whole thing came to light again. And what we did was, we took some money that, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was money that was set aside to try to correct the roof at three forty. And then we collectively decided it wasn't really worth putting a lot of money into the roof if we were gonna have the opportunity to replace it. So we took that money, and we had all of the wetlands delineated, we had the septic tanks and leaching fields located. They were put all put on plans, and then John and his staff said, okay, this is what we'd like. In between them and the engineer, they said, okay, well, this is what you want, this is where it can fit. So it wasn't like, there wasn't a lot of, there was an awful lot of thought that went into this, and it it's not, I wouldn't want anybody to think that. You know, over the last two months, all of a sudden, we said, hey, let's do this, but when we charged. Chuck Eaton, the town engineer and his firm, with evaluating these these sites. They came back in for three forty and four forty, for them to bring them up to code. And make the additions that were were needed. It was actually gonna cost more than if we raised these buildings and started from scratch, and I, you know, you gotta give the fire. Guys, a lot of credit, because they say it's, we're better off to just start from, you know, the ground up again and. Um, get pretty much what they want, and like John alluded to earlier, he doesn't know what the demands are gonna be in, you know, five, six years.
I wanna make it quite known that I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, not contradicting what I think. I think the story just needs to be told, so that other people understand what we are more intimately involved with here for the details of it, so.
Right.
I agree with you, I think there's no haphazardness involved in this, it's been coming for a long time. But I'm just anticipating we're going to need to be able to tell that story to people, so. I think we're at, we have a good move here with the videos, and to be able to show that, cuz like John said, you know, it's not like we can have a big grand open, like a grand tour and all that, whatever's going on, so I like the idea that we're being prepared for it. So, John, how many times do we have guys overnight in all of the fire stations? Do we ever have a point where we have guys in in all four stations?
Lately, no, because obviously, the COVID times have really taxed us out. But if we had the August storm and the disasters that we've had in the past year, you would have had guys stay over. This is the first year, probably, most of my staff can tell you that they think I'm checking out. Because normally, we have staff staying over on the snowstorms or other aspects, but because of the COVID times, I can't. Space out or limit staff to stay overnight, so I've taken a real gamble this year here. Um, of not committing staff to any of the stations, because I don't have the adequate space. Station one forty on Crystal Lake Road, normally, that's the main station where I have a duty crew at nighttime. But I would normally end up holding the paid staff over at night. Um, because it's hard for the volunteers to leave their house at eleven o'clock at night with, you know, six to eight inches to ten inches of snow. So normally, I would hold the the career staff over at nighttime, but this is the first year that I've not held anybody over. But if I had the adequate space, yeah, that makes the difference of, you know, five minutes of responding out of a station versus fifteen minutes or ten minutes is a long time, so. So I've gambled this year, I don't feel comfortable with it, but I'll be honest, I'll go on the record to say um, I've gambled. When we've had past instances, there would be no ID, there would be an ideal situation where if I had the space, I would do what I did back in Hurricane two thousand and eleven where we staged DPW crews and the fire department at the four fire stations to have a loader uh crews to be able to respond, but that means providing cots in adequate space. Because if I can't get down Plains Road, similar to Plains Road being closed in August for a week and a half to two weeks. Um, you know, I had a, I had to have a uh mutual aid company from Stafford and Wellington respond to Plains Road for a house fire um, back in August, so you know, I can, I can pinpoint all the storms and everything else, but as we should all know, being New Englanders, mother nature is worsening from year to year. And we should be proficient enough to plan ahead and be prepared for it, because it's not just Monday through Friday, eight to four, it's the night times, the weekends, or the storms. And if you look at our storms, Mr. Will, it does not like me when I say, um, sorry, but we have fourteen roads closed or twenty roads closed because then he has to make a decision to either close school, delay school, and we have to put up a plan together, so.
And there's no right answer for that, just so everybody knows, there's keep it open or close it, and either way it's wrong, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, so it's hard to not, it's not hard not to have the space to um adequately space out the the staffing. And has anybody fired an arrow at us in a town over the last twenty years? No, but you're gonna have that day, especially with the way the society is turning, that someone's gonna say, I'm sleeping in close proximity with a female or a male, and we don't have adequate spacing. It's gonna come down to the day and you just don't have a big enough checkbook to write that check.
All right, so then we can theoretically during storms or disaster periods have people in all four stations, so that's a a a reason for having the thing there, and I I think you said something there that again, I would like to have somebody write down, so it comes back up at another time. Is in this last storm that we had, we all heard about Eversource having crews here and not having any place for them to sleep or to stage, so if we have capacity to be able to possibly stage some guys, some utilities guys with our fire department like emergency response teams, that gets us quicker service. Is that what I heard from you?
Basically, I think, I don't think Scott could disagree with me, but basically on storms wise right now, I think we'll leave um and I don't mean to put Bruce or Scott on the spot, but they usually stage the personnel down at the rec center, which we're trying to do right now with a grant that we wrote to have a a a sheltering place down there for them. But if we space them out throughout the town, you can't put your eggs all in one basket. Because the town is forty-two square miles and you gotta be able to get around the different areas of the town. And there's nothing different than um us, you know, used to rent snowmobiles when we had major snowstorms, because you can only have the guys plowing for so long. Or if you have your wind disasters, you can't fly bucket trucks or uh utility crews because of the wind, anything over, you know, thirty-five to forty mile an hour winds, you can't put a bucket truck up, so as we have crews staged around the town, um, for whatever reason, Tallinn gets hit with the worst storms and the most road closures.
Okay, thank you, that one helps. All right, so this last question that I have um before I, Steve has had his hand up for a while. Aren't you glad we're not like in real class and you would have been like holding your hand out ten minutes? Um, one last question here for you, and this one might get a little tricky, and I'm hoping you can kinda give us some information on it. So for years, the Fire Association has um, has bought the chief's truck. And this um, this year, where it's not gonna happen, so I was wondering if you can give us some history on that and um, maybe also just a little bit of history around um why the fire marshal's truck or your truck has a five-year life and um the replacement on that.
So you're very fortunate tonight to have um Carl Doja that's on, that's.
I see you, you're two down from John.
Yeah, so he's my deputy chief, and then you also have Jeff Roos, who's the chairman of the board of directors, so um, Carl wants to talk, cause that's why he unmuted himself, but I wanna make sure that I safeguard him and protect him in today's day and age and awarding, but he is driving a two thousand and six vehicle that is probably not gonna pass a DOT um inspection this year. That vehicle was bought from the corporation um over five to six years ago. It has way over a hundred thousand miles on it, that's a first responder vehicle. Our vehicles unfortunately have to pass a DOT DMB inspection every single year to remain as a classified emergency response vehicle. His vehicle, like I said, was bought from the corporation. My vehicle used to be replaced on every four years. My vehicle has always been uh purchased by the board of directors of the fire department that those funds are raised from the phone book or donations from the town. Me holding three titles in the town as the director of public safety, the fire chief, the emergency manager director. The corporation has always uh bought the fire chief's vehicle. The town has never supplied the public safety supervisor or director a vehicle. And they're the point now that funds are and donations are lessening from year to year. And they're at the point where they would like to see the town start to supply, because technically the fire chief's using the car during the daytime Monday through Friday as a public safety director, but who is also the fire chief. We have a very complex system, but Jeff in the board of directors, since Chairman Roos took over as a board of directors, um, you know, indicated to me that, you know, the town should start supplying the vehicle um, like every other department head or other supervisors or assistants. And Jeff is on the line tonight and Carl's on the line. My vehicle gets cycled down to usually the duty officers after four or five years, and then then you have the duty officers, which is ten officers Monday through Sunday from six PM to six me, six AM using that vehicle, so you have thirteen different drivers driving a vehicle that everybody drives differently, everybody takes care of vehicle differently, but those duty officers are are mandated to respond to every emergency from six PM to six AM the next morning. And then they bring the vehicle back to the firehouse, which then the daytime staff uses, which I feel it's more proficient to have a duty vehicle during the daytime versus running a six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar apparatus to run a NAPA or the hardware, but I'll turn it over to um Chairman Roos, who's on, and Carl, I know Carl's piping at the uh bit to um indicate to say a few words, but Carl was our deputy chief and Carl was here back in the nineties as one of the first paid staff members that we've done this for over thirty-something years um as a town, so Carl.
So just to give a little history, um, we used to get a payment from the state every time we responded on I eighty-four.
All right, Carl, when you say we, um, do you mean?
Fire department.
So the the regular fire department or the volunteer fire department?
Uh, it's one and the same.
All right, well, I just, I'm not sure.
Tallinn Fire Department, uh, career and volunteer uh would receive it it used to, it was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars per call that we would go on. Um, that money would be put into a fund to buy the chief's car. Um, that money has gone away. Um, so it's put increased burden on the the corporation who had been managing it to um, increase fundraising, add, you know, extra in that they normally wouldn't have to do uh to supply that car. And uh, it's just gotten to the point where, and and you know, vehicles aren't cheap anymore, you know, we went from a, you know, an LTD station wagon when I started uh a long time ago, um, to to what we've got for, you know, an SUV and that, and that's been recent since uh since John has become chief having a four by four vehicle, which is phenomenal in responding versus the old uh state police cruisers that we used to have. So it it's evolved more than I think that the corporation can handle um, in doing it, and plus all the jobs have, over the years uh combined where before it was just a public safety supervisor and fire chief, and now, you know, John wears three, three hats at least. Um, and and it just gets to be uh a big burden uh money-wise to maintain it and to and to to um fund it. Jeff, if you wanna add, um, I can.
I'm good, Tammy, unless you have any questions.
Um, no, do you have anything else like that you wanna kind of throw in there? I'm just trying to like.
Yeah, Tammy, if you can, just understand that uh I've got the town to be influenced into buying off the state capital bid over the last ten years. Um, so we buy off the state capital bid, so you know, I drive a beautiful black Chevy Tahoe that is a two thousand and sixteen, that's off the state bid, that's a forty-three thousand dollar vehicle off the state bid versus a normal person buying it at eighty thousand dollars. Um, when you buy a state vehicle, it comes plain Jane, comes with the limited, no options, anything else wise. But we cycle that vehicle, so like what Carlos driving is a two thousand and six, it gets cycled down three times, so what Lisa and Mike said tonight, when you end up getting a fire marshal's vehicle, the other spare temporary vehicle, so if my car was to crash tonight, I would end up jumping in a two thousand and eight Jeep Cherokee that used to be the old fire marshal's vehicle. We cycle those vehicles down to be backup or temporary first responder vehicles, so Rob's would end up becoming either the next deputies or the next uh backup uh service vehicle during the daytime. Um, we try to program our vehicles out, because once you make the investment of a forty-three thousand dollar vehicle, you're talking at least between ten to fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars of lights and radios that gets programmed into it, and then a command, you know, a command pullout in the train and the rest of emergency vehicle stuff, so you know, my vehicle, unfortunately, everybody looks at it and says, well, Jesus. So like Carl said, I started out with a nineteen ninety-eight cruiser. Um, the other cruiser that we got used to be the old constables vehicles, that used to be the duty officer vehicle. Um, and then we took the uh, you know, spare pool vehicles to make service vehicles in this town. We're trying to program our ambulances to become the next service vehicles of the town, so when we cycle our ambulances, they will become the next service vehicle trucks, so you won't see a service truck in the capital budget every next five to ten years. And that's why there's a big bumper on that ambulance, everything else, because we've remounted our ambulances over the last several years. So one last project that's tied into the last ambulance remount is make that next ambulance when we go to um, replace it, unfortunately, there's a large ticket value because of all electronics and everything else that ties into it. But that next ambulance, you would only get five hundred dollars for a trade-in value. And we have the records to show what the, you know, trade-in of an old ambulance is. But when we end up doing that, you know, the other vehicles that we've sold, the other ambulance chassis that we sold, we were able to get twenty-five hundred dollars. But all that money, and I and I still have a problem with the capital budget the way it is, because when you look at your capital budget, even your chart that you showed tonight, shows a three point six percent um pie chart. That's not a three percent pie chart, because that three percent pie chart, those ambulance fees are one hundred percent generated by career and volunteer staff that there's no dollar value coming to the taxpayers, because that's coming out of ambulance fees to replace that next ambulance at two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So if we are proficient enough to build our ambulance revenue and keep the other revenue generators as far as fire marshal or rescue billing fees, when we had these emergencies or other issues that come up, if you let the fire marshal's fee schedule build itself, you would have a program in place to replace that fire marshal's vehicles in the next four to five years, where you would not see that as a dollar ticket value upon the assets of the community. So you gotta let those, you gotta let those values build um to put a good program in place for the next ten to fifteen years. But every time you reach into the kitty to take dollars out, um, it drains it, and unfortunately, in our nature and day and age, um, as we move forth with the manufacturers right now, we're about ready to go out to bid next, next week with a a new manufacturer. But we're looking at a new manufacturer that is looking at different types of manufacturing where it could generate costs for future years, where every repair that we've made has come out of emergency declarations as far as ambulance fees or ambulance schedule. So we dip into that ambulance fee schedule a lot, that has taken a lot of burden off the taxpayers of the town of Tallinn um, as well of all of us as far as dollar ticket values, because that ambulance revenue is generating and paying almost ninety percent of all of our services and fees. So, you know, it's an unfortunate situation, I'm not pushing for a new car or anything else, but that fire chief, public safety director, emergency management director's car is on the road twenty-four seven, seven days a week. And it takes hard mileage, and I don't think Jeff, the board of director chairman, can disagree with that. Um, or Carl, but you need to also keep my backup people um in a safe vehicle where you can't just throw our vehicles into a pool vehicle for us, because it needs to, it needs to meet a standard, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does. Y'all weathered the Tammy questions, so uh Steve.
All right, so this isn't a question that needs to be answered now, it's more of a request just out of curiosity. You know, I was trying to kind of listen as well as try and do the math in my head, but I'd be curious for our equipment aging schedule, kind of a percentage breakdown of, you know, comparable to our total fleet, what we're proposing for scheduled replacement within the first couple of years, as well as understanding, you know, how much of our equipment is three years past recommended end of service, four years or even even greater. Just some sort of breakdown to understand how efficient our town has been in terms of kind of kicking the can down the road to to utilize stuff that's probably passed its its useful life and where we've kind of tried to to scrape together to make something that should be replaced usable for a few more years. Um, so I don't know if Mike, that would be, it it sounds like it's probably a bit of an undertaking, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we could probably do that, so I know the color coding on this shows sort of as things kind of uh you know, peter out over time, uh I'd have to work with Scott to see if maybe we can put something together and John as well, I'm sure there's some apparatus over there that's past its useful life, so we could, we could take a look at that to see if there's a way to uh portray that. Um, I I think we're trying to do it with the colors to show as you get um darker red as it's uh kind of kind of getting worse and worse shape. Um, but maybe there's a way we could do it numerically or just at least show uh what percentage of our fleet is already past its um shelf life.
Yeah, I feel like that might be a good way to convey to to residents as well as to us, understanding, you know, how we got to where we are, you know, to kind of utilize a a well-loved uh critter in our town, you know, chickens come home to roost when past councils, not to to slam anyone in particular, when we tell every year on capital budget projects, well, we push it out another year, so we push it out two years or three years, let's put that on year five versus year three. You know, suddenly everything builds up at once and then we end up. That there's, you know, ten vehicles replaced one year, five years another, so I'd I'd like to see us reach a point where rather than pushing stuff off until one big year, a newer council, you know, looking back a year, we were probably finishing our first capital budget meeting right about now too. Um, you know, suddenly having an influx of of vehicles and equipment that need to be replaced, I'd I'd like to see probably better policy or better foresight maybe by us and future councils to say, well, we should plan this out better and we shouldn't you know, necessarily make the case for lower taxes or lower mill rate increases and say, well, we can either pay for this now or we're gonna pay a bigger price later. Um, just thinking colloquially about last year, I think I missed one of the meetings for the fire truck replacement. The the one that, you know, is seven fifty between the four for the cash and three fifty for the bonding. And Chief Lightell stated way back when that when he wanted to replace that in twenty, like thirteen or fourteen, the amount that we would have paid in cash would have covered the entire truck, instead of the seven fifty we're paying now for that truck, so it's sort of, you know, just trying to be more penny wise than pound foolish, just because you know, we wanna save a mill rate for a year or so, you know, it's I know I'm probably rambling a little bit, but that's sort of the the point I wanna make in terms of finding out the percentages and understanding how long we've really asked of our town employees to effectively utilize well-worn equipment and be creative and extending its life lifeline, is that, you know, it kind of builds up this avalanche of projects that prevent our town from being maintained and kept safe in some aspects. I wanna thank everybody for being here tonight, you know, again, this is probably a a pretty long meeting, but we appreciate all of your time and the questions you've answered.
Can I just add to that, Steve?
Yeah.
I think if you look back, last year, we got a a significant amount of money towards our capital purchases. It was either the year before that or the one right before that, I think we only got like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And as you can see by some of the pricing on this equipment. And as you can see by some of the pricing on this equipment, that, that didn't buy a big truck, it didn't buy a loader. We had to just take what we could get for, you know, figure out what we could spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on. Because when, when I sat down with the town manager, it was, well, we got to try to keep it down as low as we can and things got chopped and chopped. And, uh, it's my job to bring to you guys what we need, it's your job, which is tough to tell me what we can afford.
And, and if I can, uh, help out too, because I think when Scott said the town manager, he may have been referring to the previous manager.
Yes, yes.
The, you know, when they, when the, the department heads and, and the superintendent of schools brought forward their capital budgets to me, you know, sat down, we talked it out, we listened. What I'm presenting to you is I believe the true needs of the town. I, maybe I should have started by saying that, you know, uh, we did, we, we've edited. The original requests that came to me have been, uh, already looked at and some things were cut or they were figured out another way to like reduce costs like we talked about earlier. When Bruce fought first brought the Crandles Park, we said, how did we get that number down? It was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars or whatever it was. And we figured out a way to get that down to forty. So we've done some behind the scenes work already that, you know, we didn't want to bring the budget to you, um, in a shape that, um, you know, wasn't full and final. So that's why I'm, what I'm bringing to you tonight is my recommended capital budget. Um, and infrastructure is one of those things that you don't want to neglect for too long because if you don't fix, like as was mentioned, if you don't fix it while it's still fixable, then you're going to have an emergency mid-year and we're going to come to you for an emergency reserve fund transfer and have to hire contractors in the meantime and things like that. That, that's the type of thing that we don't want to see happen. Plus it doesn't look good either that we didn't see something coming. So I think the department heads are asking for a lifeline here and, and we're hoping that you agree with us.
Yeah, and I think that kind of falls in line too with the, um, the firehouse project, you know, I, I'm, I'm totally in favor moving forward and I'm willing to use political capital and, and engage in however I can, you know, even with COVID to reach out people and go door to door to, to expound upon the importance of these projects and the tours that we did. You know, we kind of got a face-first view and I think the public did too. You know, I think while the, the chief and all the volunteers have done a phenomenal effort and are working really hard to build a big case, it's something that I just personally feel if we, as we as counselors, if we support this, we have to go out there too and, and go to bat for, for our public safety and first responders to say, when this is on the referendum on May fourth, you know, if we're in favor of it and it passes a public hearing, you know, we're not just going to say, okay, well, the voter said yes or no, we, we, we push it so that it's there to guarantee that it's done and it moves forward for, for the next few years. And that's just my comment on that as well, so thank you.
Steve, to answer your questions, it's ten years on fire trucks, five years on reserve.
Okay.
And as you've looked, we've pushed our apparatus to the limits. The oldest truck that we have is nineteen eighty-eight. The unfortunate situation of the fire service is that we're mandated to replace certain apparatus by NF P A or standards that come out similar to building codes. So the, uh, apparatus that we're, uh, going to be replacing or refurbishing in the next couple of years, the oldest truck that you have in town is a nineteen eighty-eight apparatus that surely does not meet today's standards. Um, and the other ones that are ninety-two and ninety-three, one of them is actually at a fire service, uh, manufacturer plant today because we referred it twice already and it's got a tank leak. So, you know, as you lose fire apparatus, unfortunately, that the apparatus of the nineteen eighty-eight with Watt and, and Carl, um, as old as he is, he, he's had a recent birthday recently, but.
He's picking on you, Carl, he's picking on you.
He was here when we bought that truck in nineteen eighty-eight and, um, we went to Middle Sox, Middle Six Vermont. And correct me if I'm wrong enough, but that truck costed eighty-six thousand dollars back in the day of nineteen eighty-eight. And today it replaced that apparatus, it's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The ladder truck that, um, Cassandra wants us to use, um, was nineteen ninety-two, but that was two hundred and twenty-six, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We referred it once already, but to replace that ladder truck in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two is one point two million dollars. I can't make that stuff up and, and unfortunately, we're driven by that, um, society. So we try to refurb our apparatus as you guys all have those books. If you do not have that book, I'd be more unhappy because it gives you a description, it gives you a picture and gives you where our timeline is. But we've hired consultants over the last twenty years. And if a consultant, um, earmarks something for, to follow, well, I would think that we should follow something that's in writing and we've tried to extend that as far as we can. Um, and luckily, we haven't had any bad fortunate situations in town with apparatus accidents or rollovers similar to Virginia two weeks ago because they never get snow and they totaled.
I saw that.
They totaled two apparatus in two different towns in Virginia. Um, and we have not had that situation here.
Because we know how to drive in the snow.
That is, that is true, but unfortunately, like you hammered with, um, Scott earlier, um, I agree with the, I agree with the, um, the sand. Um, going back to the sand aspects creates a whole different aspect. When you go to a different calcium or salt, now you have to take your five-year capital plan and you have to relook at that. So every time we change stuff, we have to relook at it because we've been proficient to undercoat our apparatus and go through everything. And it has at least protected or safeguard. But when you start eating chains off of our drop trains of the traction anti-slip devices on our apparatus, it's eating that, the metal or eating our storm grates in town. That's, that's a bad, that's a bad sign. So you can just imagine what it's doing to the public works, um, the pool cars, the fire apparatus. It's, you can't put a real good five-year plan together because everything is deteriorating that much faster. So our vehicles that we use to get ten, fifteen, twenty years is now even worse. Um, and, and the biggest thing is it's attacking the electrical systems and all the apparatus. So, you know, it's hard for us to sit here and come back and forth every single year because things change. And like you said, Tammy, you might want to look at, you know, out west because they're not using that molasses, they're actually using a beet juice. Yep, the beet juice is actually different than, um, the molasses and the rest of the stuff. So there's been so many studies, um, and everything else. But like we said, we, we try to, uh, be proficient, but, um, we've actually probably got a wash garage up to the highway garage where we can take our apparatus and all the town vehicles through there. Um, but unfortunately, like you said, when you have your close, uh, compacted firehouses, you got to think about deterioration. So as you get your apparatus in there at nighttime with the salt and the rest of the stuff, um, that salt and that other stuff eats away at that apparatus and the rest of the stuff. And we're trying to best that we can, we have a good fleet, we have a great staff. But, um, you know, whether it's the public works or our department or anything else wise, things that, you know, change from every couple of years as we change procedures throughout the state or the federal or the towns.
Thank you, um, Lou?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mike, one of the things I, I think that for, for everything that we're looking at here, is there any table like depreciation, depreciation table, uh, so that we could, you know, going forward so that we can see what the depreciation is, how the, you know, on the, uh, equipment that we're looking at or the equipment that we have so that we can sort of pace it out and see if it's something that, you know, we want to bond upfront and then pay, like, you know, try and see about paying for cash later on in point in time. Um, you know, I just, you know, I'm just thinking ahead, trying to sort of see how we can sort of look, uh, look through things, uh, see how it would be most effective to pay for them, you know, and, uh, and things like that. So, I don't know, it's late and I'm starting to ramble, so I'm just going to stop.
The only question I would have maybe at least Lisa, when we, when we look at the debt schedule, that shows sort of how things kind of, get paid, paid for over time, um, but doesn't necessarily show the useful lives of the assets. Um, I don't know that we, uh, we could, I mean, that sort of goes in line with what we talked about earlier about if you can have some sort of numerical chart that, um, showed the useful life of each asset. And then those that are over their useful lives can be highlighted in some way. Um, it's tough though, because I think especially for the equipment, everything's got different useful lives. And then there are some assets here that probably wouldn't make sense to do that with. But I, I might be too late for this capital budget and maybe we can incorporate that next year. Uh, I, I can talk to the, the staff and see what, what we can put together.
Yeah, we don't want it for Lisa, for her.
Or anything like that, but it's just something that can also, um, because it could also, it would also help us say this is why we're doing it this way as opposed to this way, something more so that we can have information for ourselves, but also it's information that we could put out, uh, to, uh, to our residents when, um, you know, when, when we do make a decision about certain things. Thanks.
Thank you, Lou. Uh, Steve?
Just a quick clarifying question for Chief Laitel. And he said they clean the undercarriages of the fleet. Is that done through the facility that, um, that we have at the highway department or that Scott has that we saw last year? Or do you have to do that at each station with the equipment that's available there? In terms of like cleaning the undercarriage for road salt and the, and, you know, the contaminants every season?
So years ago, I bought pressure washers for all the firehouses and undercarriage stuff, but we have a fleet that, uh, goes to a commercial service to undercoat. So when I go to do my, um, D O T inspections, we have the vehicles sprayed. We've been doing that for the last four to five years, which, yeah, it might be a two hundred dollar, a hundred and fifty dollar charge, but I think that programmed our vehicles the last at least another four to five years. Um, you know, unfortunately, the staff have put in numerous complaints that unfortunately, they haven't made it to the town manager level. But the smell in the firehouses and everything else with that undercoating and that spray, um, has, you know, programmed our vehicles that last longer. So right now, we're trying to reprogram everything where we don't wash the vehicles because of D E P standards have changed because you're not supposed to pick up material or wash vehicles. Um, so things have changed, so we're trying to use the highway garage as much as we can, which thankfully, uh, Director Lappin has, um, allowed us access. And his staff up there has given training to a certain number of individuals. So we don't have anybody, uh, driving up there at ten o'clock at night or eleven o'clock at night. There's a program to make sure that it's done during the daytime and it's under supervision.
Okay, no, that's great, thank you.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have anything else before we actually open this up to the public hearing?
Tammy, the only thing I got to say is the only thing that's left out, and I'm not trying to, um, put Mr. Rosen or, uh, Lisa on, but the two thousand and six capital facilities plan that was adopted by the council back in the day, um, included as well as the animal control facility as far as one of my facilities that I'm responsible for. We have not put that in as far as a target line item. We've been fortunate enough to pass the animal control inspections from a yearly basis. We are at talks at management level with Mr. Rosen and a few other selectmen as far as budgetary in towns. But that is one of the facilities that I am responsible for. Um, that was programmed back in two thousand and six when the council adopted a facilities plan. Um, I, I have not programmed for. So one of the other departments that I'm responsible for, and I don't want anybody to be surprised if something comes down the pipe that we get, um, an invalid inspection or something else. But you should have that on your, your, your target.
Yeah, I think we should, um, uh, I, I think we should wait to see how those talks go. Um, I actually was talking to, uh, the first selectman in Ashford about that also. So, um, let's see where that kind of all rumbles out and then we can kind of maybe have it on, like you said, have it on the radar or something to maybe talk about next year. Depending on, 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 on how that rolls. All right, anybody else, any other questions? All right, so I guess I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Steve Jones, I'll make that motion to open a public hearing.
Colonel, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, uh, Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that passes unanimously, thank you, Lisa. Um, if you are a part of the public and would like to raise your hand, um, the raise hand function will get you in line. If you are on the phone, it's star nine, that will raise your hand. And we'll call on you in order of being, uh, hand raised and you have to state your name and address for the record. Does anybody have any questions? Going once? Going twice? I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Steve Jones, I'll entertain a motion, or I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Colonel, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, Cassandra?
Oh, sorry, I pressed the wrong button, aye. I was off, I'm sorry.
Steve?
I'm tired, I'm sorry.
No worries, aye.
Uh, John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that's unanimous, that closes the public hearing. With that, I will, uh, go ahead, Steve.
All right, I'd make a motion to adjourn that important.
Lou, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Um, all those in favor, yawns don't count, Cassandra?
All right, aye. Steve, it's back to my bedroom.
Uh, John?
Aye.
Uh, Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, I would like to point out, do y'all see my beautiful library background? This is the infamous, like, somebody actually thought this was my house. I was like, you're so funny. Yes, this is the library. Okay, everybody, have a great night. Thank you all for coming, I hope we didn't beat you guys up too badly, but thank you and, uh, talk to you guys soon.